I'll call the regular works to go to regular meeting of Dayton City Council. From our actual standing. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion and a second for the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, any changes?
I have a couple of questions on item E.
Same.
So I wonder if that should be pulled out then?
We can pull it out.
I would like to pull out E.
So let's pull out E. Any other changes? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Agenda carries five to zero. Under consent and the motion and second.
Need a second?
I can.
Okay.
I have a question on F. Not that I'm not supportive of the Magnus Foundation's receiving funding, I just was just curious on, I'm not sure if there's anyone from Magnus here who could speak to it.
I don't have to be here.
Okay.
So do I.
Well, because I'm like all for them, my first thought was, of course, they can go ask for money, have fun. But then my second, then I did think, well, are they planning to like stay within like, because it said expand, right? It's like, are they going to keep the same look, style, feel of the existing building? Because like, the whole, like, the beauty of that is, it feels like you're at, like, this resort, it doesn't feel like you're at an institution, right?
Yeah, I think it was just to improve the, because right now, like, where the gym is, it's not, they can only use it in the summertime.
Okay.
So it's not heated or it's not insulated properly or things like that.
Yeah.
So I think the main feel is going to stay the same, it was just to do some upgrades to make the space more usable all year round.
Okay, and yeah, like I said, I'm, I was never against it, I was just curious if, like, how, how big of an expansion were they going to change the feel of the space itself? But then, yeah, that was my only question there. Okay.
Anything else? Anybody, any other discussion?
I had two questions. One on the payment of claims, there's a charge for Ellers at $10,500, is that related to the Dayton Parkway project?
Yeah, councilor of fashion, that is a payment to Ellers in order to do the Parkway neighborhood financing information that was paid for by escrow from the developer.
Okay, that was my second question on that one, thank you. Also, and then Marty, the dust control, Marty's not here.
Marty's not here? I can help you out, hopefully I can help you out with anything, but.
Sure, well, now I got 10 questions.
It's going to be tough.
Well, the bid seems to be based on the price per gallon of applying the dust control material, but one bid was based on a 10,000 gallon assumption and the other one on 4,300 gallon, I was just curious, you know, why there might be such a big difference in what they thought they were going to be doing.
Yeah, I don't know that answer, it's a very technical question, I don't know if Jason Quisberg knows by chance. Okay, I can get back to the councilmembers, the mayor and the councilmembers, if that's a, if you're back?
Yeah, I'm just curious.
We had the same question last year, and I don't remember the answer, but one bid was based, yeah, it was the same kind of deal.
Yeah, just curious why they had, you know, why their assumption was so, so different. I mean, it's, ultimately, it's a cost per gallon and what they use, so I don't have any problem with the, with the choice.
Yeah, it may be just based on what they know for information of how many dirt roads we have. I know, I think last year was the year after we did Zanzibar, and so one of the quotes still had Zanzibar in there listed as a dirt road that we needed to have dust control done where, as we actually didn't, and one of the other groups actually came out and looked at the process. I don't know that to be the answer, but it may be that's still the same thing.
All right.
I can get the answer back for you, though.
Thank you.
I'll send it on this week's weekly update.
That's all.
Anybody have anything?
This is just kind of more of a general how things work question, so when we got the final plat for Riverwalk fourth edition, there were quite a few comments from the engineer about things that weren't making sense or didn't match, like, the assumption is all of that's going to get fixed, right, before, like, okay.
Yeah.
I assumed, but having happened on this end of it, I wasn't, I wanted to confirm that. And then, one thing that, having gone through all of this stuff from the one that were pulled out for DCM Farms, in there was mentioned a couple of things about, like, using biodegradable erosion control and having, like, wildlife-friendly curbs, right, so that wildlife can get in and out. Are we, is that something we ask of all developments? If not, can we? And how, again, I'm not sure, it's not going to change my vote on this, but it made me think of those questions, so.
We defer to.
Can I talk about the turtle?
Yeah, but just in general, like.
So with new development, we don't know where driveways are going, so we use surmountable curb.
Okay.
So just by default, we end up with the curbs that do allow that.
Okay.
But it is a pretty standard, it's probably on the blending turtle would be my guess where that was made, it was a pretty standard comment on those.
Okay, and then what about the biodegradable erosion control? Is that like a requirement, like, just assumption or?
We don't necessarily require that 100% of the time, but it is the most often. We want it to biodegrade, and there's different levels, some will degrade from one to three years, some will last like six to seven or others, but we, we generally do just use that because we don't want permanent things out there that aren't needed.
Okay, thank you for that.
Anybody else have anything? Okay, so we got a motion and a second, all those in favor for consent say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Consent carries five to zero, and then we're on to item E. Need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion.
Need a second. Need a second or it dies.
I'll second.
Okay. Go ahead and discuss, who wants to go first?
You go first.
Sure, so, one of the things that I noticed in, in reading this, and I know, Jason, this isn't your work per se, but I'm sure you did review it, was on one of the pages, page 93 is what I'm looking at, it's, notes the, the private wells that are in the area, and in some of them, I was surprised by the depth of them. They're, to my eyes, and I'm not a well driller or figure, but 79 feet, 80 feet, all in, in that range, are those considered shallow wells or deep wells?
That's a good question, that can vary, it's a little bit subjective depending on the circumstances, but those are, I mean, just generally, they're pretty shallow. Yes, that, they, they're not necessarily well points, so they are down into the aquifers, or at least we would believe them to be, so into a layer, hopefully under some layer that prevents groundwater from going down.
Technically called, because technically they're not shallow.
I mean, yeah, I guess that's.
Yeah, I mean, they, they sound shallow, right? But yes.
When I think of shallow, I think of a surface pump, but whatever.
Yeah, so like a well point or something would generally be, and that's just taking, like, literal precipitation that settles as groundwater. These are usually aquifers much lower than that and under layers that may even be like shale layers or other impermeable or less permeable layers, so they're better protected.
And that's what made me ask the question, because they also listed the depths for the various aquifers in the area, and they're all much deeper than these wells, so they're not really into the.
Those are the main aquifers, and, yeah, for the, for the larger supply. This is pretty common to have shallower for the homes, such as, like, the, the city wells, for example, are down in the Tunnel City want to walk, which is probably 400 at its shallowest area.
Mine's 50.
Yours is 50?
No.
I think 150 something.
It really depends on, in the city, I mean, they've got 152nd, he had to go down almost 400 feet.
Yeah, I think the, yeah, and certain ones produce more water than others as well, so like the golf course irrigation is like 400 and some feet deep as well.
Sure, based on the volume that they're going to use, I suppose.
Yeah, some regenerate a lot faster and allow higher pump rates.
Well, it just occurred to me, because we've had a lot of discussion, you know, about water problems, and this is not related to that certainly, but concerns over the, the potential for a gas station, which is not part of the current ask, I know, but, you know, are those wells more susceptible to things settling into the ground than, than the ones that are 200 feet deep, which are also are common in that area?
I, I would argue, yes, they are more susceptible. I would not necessarily automatically say they're at risk, but more susceptible certainly, having to only pass through 200 feet of material rather than, or, sorry, 100 feet versus 200 or more. And additionally, I guess I don't know locally where the impermeable layers are that have that level of protection as well. There are shale layers in the area, I know, just because we passed some on the test wells, we drilled along 117th, but I don't recall the exact depth of those.
Okay, well, I guess something, something to be aware of, it's not, it's not actually part of the project, it's just facts about the area, but something we should probably keep in mind. Go ahead, Sarah.
Okay, so, on page 41, I'm, well, throughout it, I'm kind of frustrated that their responses are, we'll consider it, or we may, because that's what I tell my students when they ask if I can please put extra credit on the final, I say, I'll consider it, which means, no, I'm not going to, but I don't want to have this conversation with you. So I would like, so some of the things were using native seed, and they said, we'll consider it, and I think they should. And using the, there was a couple of other places along those lines, so page 41 on the native seed, some of the things for the turtles, some of the things about, it was on page 40, nope, what page was that? Page 83, that was another one, about, oh, land use and heavier rainfall, and so opportunities to mitigate potential increased risk of flooding associated with the potential increase in heavy rainfall events may include constructing green infrastructure features such as rain gardens, catch basins, and infiltration systems. I want that, like, I don't want it to be a may, like, it should, like, it has to include. And so, like, that just got frustrating throughout this thing, is, yeah, we'll think about it. And I don't, I, I'm not okay with that, I think it, we will do those things. Other things were, how do we make sure they actually do them? So the blending turtles was one, but the chloride management plan was another one. Like, how do we actually ensure that they do have a chloride management plan and they stick to it? Again, the well water issue, it's not just the oil from a possible gas station, it's all of the salt people put in their driveways in winter, and in fact, I would argue probably homeowners are worse than the city is about, like, putting way too much salt in, and that all goes in, and that's going to go into, like, into our water. So like, how do we ensure that these, that these developments have these plans, that they actually follow through on them? That's kind of an open question. How do we do that?
So, one I can kind of give the over, this is a guiding document, it isn't anything to set necessarily obligations, and just to note, the responses are the city responses.
Yeah, okay.
Not the developers.
Okay.
So this is a city document, it's a city-owned document and approved document.
Okay.
For the development, so certainly uses information from both, so it's, it's developer provided information together with the city, but these are city responses to it. As far as the implementation of them, I mean, they'll certainly be required through the plan review process and enforced through the developers agreement if they're seemed as, or deemed as important and to make sure they're actually committing to those. A lot of the items in here do just, they, they are just done as part of the process. For example, to meet watershed requirements, they need to do a lot of these things, the stormwater management plan, for example.
Okay.
But if there is anything specific out of this that is chosen to make sure it's implemented, there's, there's tools to do that through the agreements.
Okay, and when, like, how and when do we make sure that happens?
The, the developers agreement is executed at the time of final plat.
Okay.
So that would be.
So that would be the moment to be like, what has to be.
That would be the enforcement for it.
Okay.
To be a condition in there.
Thank you.
And you might want to talk to staff, kind of go through your list.
Okay.
To make sure it's in the developers agreement before it comes to us.
Okay, okay. Should I send that to Zach then?
Well, or at least they'll know to discuss it.
Yeah.
Because it may not be a majority of us that.
No, but at least.
At least it's on their radar.
Yeah.
So the, the answers are a little bit soft for the reason not to create committal at this stage, but instead wait until the others, so.
Yeah, well, this is my first time, because normally I sit at the planning commission, which is way early on, and I haven't ever seen it this side of that process.
And I don't know if the whole thing's been in the packet before, to be honest. Maybe, we've had a few of these, but, or have they been?
And that, that kind of soft language is common in them.
Okay.
I've been questioned that before also, but as Jason said, there's other points in this where it gets a lot more specific.
Okay, I'll, I'll note those points, and I'll be on it for those, for those points. Okay, so then, yes, I'm good then.
Jason.
One other question.
Go ahead, Scott.
Clearly, this is just an oversight and it hasn't been corrected in, in this document. It still says 267 unit residential, single-family homes, and it's now 253.
Yeah, this, this, because of the review periods, this was actually completed some time ago, so, yeah, it doesn't get updated with the revisions and the actual submittal. Another thing to note on here is, it's not necessarily specifically what, what will get built necessarily, the intent of these is to have them at least as intense, if not more intense than what will go at the end. In other words, we want to know if there's any environmental concerns with this project. If they do something less intense later, we can be comfortable that there's still none. We don't want them coming in and saying, we're going to build 50 homes and then come back later with 300. We'd want to go through this process again, so.
That makes sense.
Oh, sure, so, another question I had is, one of the pages in here, 138, talks about the project area and soil map and then farmland classifications, and there's different types of farmland, and a couple areas are circled as farmland of statewide importance, and I'm wondering what that means.
That's a good question, and I don't know the answer to that. I would have to get, get an answer for that and get back to you.
Yeah, I was just curious, more than anything, I mean, is it the quality of the soil or what, what triggers that, but it's not unlike an official word, so I feel like I had to ask.
Jason, could you kind of walk through what an EIS provides on top of the worksheet?
It's a good question, too. I really regret not in, not bringing the author of these, I don't write these reports. So it's, it's a much more intensive study, so the EAW is Environmental Assessment Worksheet, so it's kind of a checklist list process, this is at least my view on them, to just look at the potential environmental impacts of what's being proposed, so it's basically, you know, what are we looking at and what might happen from this, and what are the ways that these should be addressed such that they don't cause problems in the future? My understanding is, if there is the need found, which is really the exercise here, is, this is done to determine if an EIS is needed. If an EIS is needed, it's a much more in-depth look, it's a considerably, the, the effort is considerably larger. I don't know exactly what that is, I think these are around $50,000 to prepare, I think those are probably a couple hundred thousand dollars if I'm not mistaken. Lot more research, lot more investigation, I think it also includes site-specific field investigations, or at least could along those lines. So generally, much more intensive and closer look.
It's a much harder detailed analysis.
Unfortunately, I can't give you a lot of detail on those, I don't, I don't get involved with the production of these, but we do have experts that only do these, is that right? So if you, if you have any questions, I can absolutely put you in connection with those or, or forward any questions to them if you'd like more information on the process.
Any other questions? Okay, we got a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm talking about item E. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes five to zero. And with that, we are to open forum, open forum limited to three minutes for non-agenda items, state your name and address, no consultation will be taken, and items referred back to staff.
First, I just want to make a comment. At the last city council meeting, Three Rivers Park was here, and they were giving a presentation, and Councilman Fashad was quite passionate about that presentation and about what was going on in his neighborhood, and I just want to say, I wish you guys had the same passion for all the neighborhoods in this city. I'd like the display of passion, but I want to see it for everybody. But anyways, my real comments are about absentee owners in the city. I was just kind of glancing through Hanipen County's website, and I noticed that for the new neighborhood from 113th South to the Maple Grove border has a lot of absentee owners, and I'm wondering what the city's policy is about absentee owners. I'm concerned because people who rent have really no investment in the city, and they have no investment in their neighborhood, and the absentee landlords who claim homestead, and some of them do claim homestead, results in a loss of revenue for our city, too. So my question is, what policies does the city have about absentee owners? I know that Chaplain and Maple Grove both require licenses and permits for absentee owners, in fact, I saw at the city of Maple Grove, they just revoked one of those licenses because of problems with the house, with the renters in the house, and I'm wondering about that. I'm also wondering about, you know, the big thing now is VRBO, Vacation Rentals by Owner, do we have any regulations about that? Some of these houses are governed by HOAs, I think, and do the HOAs allow rentals or disallow rentals? And what are the rules and regulations of the city regarding rentals? I'd like to know what the city is doing about that, or has done about that. Even, even Tom Dean has said that there are a lot of rentals in that neighborhood, and I'm worried about rentals across the street from me again now, too. Not only the commercial part, but, you know, that, especially that little segment of town homes that's in the southeast corner that he's putting in, and you've talked about the roads there and stuff, is that going to be rental or is that going to be owners? I'd like the city to check into some of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Couple of things, just want to echo what, what Marcia was talking about in David, I was really impressed with, you know, how you felt about your neighborhood when they talked about, you know, Hanipen County coming through and sticking something in there that, that the people along the river there didn't want. I mean, I get that, I really get that, because I'm looking at that out my front window, I really am. The house thing, I get it, you got to put houses there, they're going to be on smaller lots than I would prefer, I get that, I don't get my way all the time, but I don't understand why we're always bending the rules for people who don't live in the city, haven't lived in this city for 30 years. They may have relatives that live in this city, but they don't live here. I, my, my family's in the fourth generation that lives in this city, so this hits a lot more home to me. A couple of things that was discussed at the planning commission last week, the traffic, and we all know what 121 is, you know, it's a real can of worms. The, and I think I brought it up to you folks before, that the markings on Rush Creek Parkway, the paintings on the road that tell people what lane to go in, you know, that you need to be in the left lane to go straight across on Elm Creek Road, my wife and I were sitting at that intersection the other day, that very same thing happened to me, the person in the right lane, that should be just the, the right turn lane to go south on Fernbrook, we were in the left lane, which lines up with Elm Creek Road, we were going across over to my daughter's on the farm. The car on my right side, I said to Marcia, watch that car, I'm not going to move, that car's going to go across and they're going to cut across in front of me, and that's exactly what they did. That's so confusing for people, and I've seen that happen so many times and felt that myself sitting at that intersection, I don't go through there that way that many times, but you really need to do something about that. Those markings on that road were brought up to the city last summer, my son-in-law brought it up, I brought it up last fall to get those markings put in that road. I don't understand why it takes so long to do that, I really don't. Do what we did on 117th, at least mark the lane so people know what lane to get in, what lane goes across, what lane goes across and left turn, and what lane goes to the right, so you don't have two people pulling out at the same time out of two lanes trying to get into one, that just doesn't work very well. The other thing that, that really bothered me at the planning commission was the discussion of rooting all of the traffic, all the construction traffic, all of the people traffic from the new area that they're developing, onto 113th, to get out onto 121. That's an intersection that has no turn lanes, no markings, heck, it's got a stop sign there, but I bet you 80% of the people that go through there don't stop, it's just so dangerous to be out there. I get, I'm actually scared to go out and get my bail, because I have to stand across that road and watch cars coming and watch people dot, dodging out of 113th that don't even slow down. They don't, I know they don't even touch their brake lights because they're going through there too fast. And to root all of that traffic from that new development that we're talking about, construction and, and residential, onto 113th that come out onto 121, I think that's just crazy. Someone is going to get killed at that intersection, you can't do that, you can't root all that stuff out there. Trucks turn that corner now, if a car's sitting at the stop sign, a truck can't turn that corner, it stops dead traffic in, in front of my house to make the right turn, to make sure 113th is clear, and then the truck can make the corner. It's just not big enough for a truck to go through with a car. And the last time we were down here, I, I can't remember if it was at the council meeting or the, or the planning commission meeting, but a lady got berended there, waiting for a garbage truck to make a left turn to go out to the golf course to pick up the garbage. She stopped, the person behind her didn't stop, both cars went away on the hook, neither one were drivable. Luckily, nobody got hurt, the young man in the car didn't get hurt, the lady with the two little kids in the backseat didn't get hurt, but I think we're just, we just keep dodging a bullet there. And if you, if you, you let them reroute that traffic and bring it all on 113th, I know somebody's going to get hurt there. It's just not set up for that kind of traffic. It isn't. I think you need to figure out a way to bring some of that traffic out on 117th and bring some of it across through the development that's already built there over to Rush Creek Parkway. Again, an intersection that's got some turn lanes so that people aren't stopped in the middle of the road to try to get in and out, but to bring that traffic on, on 113th, I think is just crazy, absolutely crazy. One other thing I want to mention quick is that my well, the water level in my well is, I don't like, 65 feet. If they're going to dig a holding pond across the street from my house to run the water from that new development into, what's the difference going to be in elevation between the water level in my well and the bottom of that holding pond? And is that holding pond going to be a kind of a pond that won't let water percolate into the ground? Or is it going to be a holding pond that holds water and then it, the overflow runs north and goes under 121 like it does now? There's so many questions that, that keep coming up, and I, I come to all the planning commission meetings, I don't hear any discussion about that. I'm glad that you guys are thinking about that here tonight, but I don't hear anything from those folks. I think those folks would be the ones that would be asking those questions and looking into that prior to them dumping the thing into your lap. prior to them dumping the thing into your lap. I mean, otherwise, why are they even there? I guess that's probably enough. Thanks for your time, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody online?
So if you wanted to speak in open forum, if you can use the raise your hand function.
Okay, we'll move on. Staff consultant, council updates.
Yep, good evening, mayor and members of council. Couple of updates for you. Mayor Fisher and I went down to the Capitol last Tuesday to speak in front of the House Capital Investment Committee about two water projects that we have posted at the Capitol to get funding from the state. I appreciate the mayor taking the time to go down and speak on behalf of the city. Let's hope we get some money for that effort. And we had a total ask of about $8 million in total. City Day on the Hill was last Thursday. Councilmember Solonik, Councilmember Fashion and myself went down to the Capitol to meet with Representative Nadeau and Senator Hoffman. Good day of information, lots of discussion. And overall, was able to meet with both legislatures, which were fantastic. Last update for you is during the work session on February 25th, last meeting, the council made a direction to have one person from the city council be on the negotiating team. No one was selected during that meeting. Can we have a discussion tonight on who you'd like from the council to go on that negotiating team?
Volunteers?
Not my skill set.
Sure might be on it.
Huh?
I'll certainly be there.
I'm okay with it.
If anybody's good with it.
I'm good with it.
Okay.
Okay, sounds great. So I need it. Thank you very much.
Amy?
We will have our city open house May 14th from 5 to 7. Elizabeth is wondering if the council would like a table? Are you guys just wanting to walk around freely? And then if you're needing any material printed or would like to have anything ready? If you could email me or her and let us know we can have things set up for you.
Five to seven?
Yes. And that's at the Public Works.
I can walk there.
Till Wednesday?
Sorry.
We'll leave it till, yeah, Wednesday.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
And then we, myself and Kelly have been working on looking into AI for helping with the minutes. And I think we found a solution. The city of Buffalo has recommended a company to help with that. So one thing to keep in mind, we are doing a test with this company to see what that looks like. But they, it learns your voice or the speakers. So it'll be really important to speak clearly into the microphones during the meetings, not speak over each other. And then, as always, if you can repeat motions of who said what, can also help with that process.
Trying to remember, there's a city already using it?
The service that we're using now?
The city, I don't know what the service is, but they're also using an AI tool to summarize minutes. I don't remember who it was. I'll try to find out maybe, but...
Oh, the service that we're using now, I don't believe uses AI at all. But the city of Buffalo was this, I think it's a newer company. I didn't do much research on the company itself, but they had shared some pros and cons and their experience so far. But they just signed a contract with them.
Okay. Anything else? Jay?
No report.
Jay? Jason?
Just to let council know, we had a kickoff meeting with Hennepin County and their consultant that's completing the corridor study for River Road. That's the entire, essentially the entire length through the city of Dayton and then into Champlin as well. With that, just to give a general schedule, we have an overlying schedule of the meeting and just touched on some initial components of that. But the overall schedule is looking at a completion of September for that. During the process, they do have public engagement involved with it, including some pop-up meetings, which would be probably by neighborhood, maybe, if you will, or smaller audiences or project areas, as well as, it looks like probably two larger, like full meetings for the entire project length. With that first one likely being sometime, I think it was probably mid-April. So more to come on that. So there will be some more information provided on that. If there is any interest for specific updates to council, they may be willing to come in and do that or we can certainly pass along any findings in that study as they come available to us.
What was the point of the study?
It's just to look at the entire corridor improvements.
For 29 or whenever it was?
For all of them, yeah. So 28, they're doing a section in Champlin. 29, they're doing the section in Dayton at North Diamond Lake Road intersection to the west. And then the remaining portion of that is to be done in subsequent years. I think the dates are to be determined. But just look at it, where should the trails be? For an example, we made the request of, can they keep on the lookout for any good spots for underpasses, for pedestrian crossings of great separated crossings? Or that Three Rivers wants a trail corridor along the entire length, so that should be accommodated in it. So still pretty high level. We'll keep you posted as that moves forward. But something to keep in mind, if there's questions about what's happening out there, we, they're getting, starting to get some progress done on that project. That was it.
Scott? I got nothing.
Sarah?
I have several things. So at, in my first January meeting, remember the second one, I brought up possibly working on a lighting ordinance. And we all agreed, I was just wondering where that was in the process? If a draft one has been made, when that's going to go to the planning commission? Just wanted an update on that.
It will either be April, depending on if we can get it out in time, or it'll be in May.
Okay, but it is...
It is on the...
The wheels are turning.
The wheels are turning.
Okay. Next thing, at the last meeting, the Three Rivers Park and the Mississippi thing came up. And we had said that we would approve that particular sale, but that we wanted to have further conversation. I do think it's important that that be, I think one of the frustrations was how many things have happened in the background or way in the past and haven't been updated. So I would really like to have some sort of formal motion by the city council to say exactly what we need from Three Rivers Park so that we would say yes, or basically consider in the future. And I think it's important that that go to the property owners along the river because I think there are other people already in conversation. And if we are thinking of saying, like, I just want it all to be out on the table. I want everyone informed. And so I don't know what the timing is for getting letters to the impacted property owners that like, because I know there's time late, like, obviously, I guess my point is, I know we can't do it at this meeting because those property owners have not been notified. But I don't know at what meeting it can happen. But I think it needs to happen sooner rather than later where we hash out. Because we had said we wanted, like, that the Three Rivers Park District has to sit down with, like, give us a plan. What is your actual plan? What is your goal? How many properties, like, when is enough enough? Are you just going to, like, we want to know, Steph, and we ask them to have meetings with the residents. I think we just need to sit down and say exactly what we are looking for and have it in writing and have the residents impacted directly be at a meeting or have the chance to come to this meeting and tell us what they would like as well. Am I making, am I making any sense to anyone but myself?
Actually, I was thinking the same thing. So I don't know, you know, where you guys got to, where you got to in your thinking, but if we're going to decide, at least at this moment, I don't want to approve any more sales.
Yeah.
And so if the majority of the council is there, it seems like we owe it to the landowners along there to let them know.
Don't make plans.
Don't make plans because until we hear something that convinces us otherwise, I'm on board with that.
I don't, you know, it's not an agenda item, so I'm just making a comment as well. But I think we, as a council, need to decide what, you know, what are interested in that? The future of that stretch of road is for us. Are we okay with what's happening or do we want to have a different plan? Because we better figure that out soon.
Yeah. So what is the timing? Like, how much time do you need to notify the residents before, like, can this be on our next agenda? Or will it have to be two agendas out from now?
I don't think there's, I mean, we could simply say, just as a statement of fact, we don't plan on approving any more sales until we get an understanding of what's going on and agree with that plan. But in the meantime, I just, it just seems to me that we should be probably approving some sort of statement and then get that out to the residents. And it would seem to me we could get it out in the next council meeting.
Yeah, yeah, so I'll ask some clarifying questions, Councilmember Van Assen, just so I know kind of what you're thinking. It sounds like we want to get information down on paper that says, here's what city council's thinking about through its park district with the corridor along Dayton Road, between Dayton Road and Mississippi River, essentially. Is that a comment coming from the city of, the city council? Is that taking in public comments and then addressing those into that portion? Or is that just us stating that here's where we're at with things until we can have a further conversation? The reason I ask that question is because Three Rivers Park District reached out to me after the council meeting. They said, hey, we need to have a conversation. And that was last, I think it was late, two weeks ago, early last week, to have a conversation about how do we move forward with this process so that we're all on the same page with things. And that's why I asked the question is so that I can give you direction of like what's going to be best. We can notify the residents. It's going to take, you know, probably two weeks to get there because it takes a week in the mail or so, five days. Even if it takes us till the end of this week or even early next week, we're still talking two weeks. So we can have a comment on the March 25th meeting if you'd like, which is in two weeks from tonight. However, that's not likely going to give a lot of time for the residents to come in here. We can notify them of what's happening, but...
I'm not sure that the resident input, at least for this phase of what we're talking about, is necessary. I mean, to me, I just wouldn't approve anything. Personally, I wouldn't approve it until I understand what they're doing.
Okay, and it sounds like that's kind of direction from most of the council. So I'm happy just to write something to Three Rivers Park District to let them know and then we can kind of have maybe a touch base. We can do a joint meeting or something like that is kind of the next direction. Because the direction doesn't need to be like a resolution and an approval. It can just be direction given right now. It sounds like we have at least three votes to say, we're not approving any more sales until we know a plan.
I guess, yeah, what I'm thinking is if we have at least three like minds here, we would give the letters out to the residents saying, at this point, the council's not likely to pass any approvals on selling your homes to Three Rivers until they get an understanding of what's going on and agree with it.
Sure.
Does that make sense?
That conversation's got to go to Three Rivers more than, I mean, they're the ones that are...
That's what, yeah, I would just headbutt and just go right to Three Rivers because instead of us sending out letters, I mean, we can let the residents know, which is fine. Because what's going to happen is a resident's going to reach out to Three Rivers Park District and Three Rivers Park District knows that we're not going to sell, or not going to approve any more sales. They're going to say, at this time, the council's not selling anymore.
Maybe.
My vote is both.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Why wouldn't they do that?
Because it's not in their best interest.
But they're not going to, Three Rivers Park District cannot buy, sell, acquire any property, period, through any process without the approval of council.
Correct. But if they get the homeowner on board, now there's more pressure on the council.
And they have not been, you know, being totally clear with people that this is a decision point here.
Sure.
That these sales agreements are coming to us and the homeowners are fully under the understanding that this is simply a rubber stamp, a piece of the process they don't need to consider. So this would be a change in that regard. And I agree, it needs to be Three Rivers first. But not only, who needs to know that at this point, we don't understand the plan and we're not approving any more sales.
Sure. Exactly, we can't send out, I think it's maybe 30 some homes or so. I mean, it's like it's a lot, it's just the process, so.
My vote is both, based on some conversations I've had with those residents, that sometimes whether it's intentional or not, the communication from Three Rivers Park is not always clearly understood by the residents. And whether that's, you know, it's easy to miscommunicate, right? And so I do think if everyone gets the same piece of information and that source of truth is the city and that both Three Rivers has this document, statement, and the homeowners have this statement, then there's less room for error, whether it is an intentional misleading or an unintentional misleading, right? But I do, from what I've been told by some of those homeowners, that for whatever reason, they were led to believe, I believe the exact words is, the city's never said no yet. So when that is the mentality, right? Like, so that's why my vote is both, Three Rivers and the residents. And not, and, yeah, not that it's no forever, it's just we want to have, it's no for now until we have a better understanding of what the heck is going on. So, and I would assume also, when this goes further, like, our own parks commission should probably be part of this conversation as well. So whether that is a joint meeting between us and the parks commission and Three Rivers, like, I don't know what those next steps are. But I think for now, these residents need to know as soon as possible that they should not be making purchased agreements on other houses with the assumption that Three Rivers Park is going to buy their land. So, because then they're going to be real mad if we say no and we look real awful at that point.
Sounds good.
Okay, so that was that thing. Are you...
Yep.
So the next thing was, at the last meeting, the storage of recreational vehicles in backyards and side yards was voted down. But I, and I heard after the fact a comment about like, something about being a waste of time. It was not, I think it needs to come back. I still think there's an issue there with how recreational vehicles are stored. And I think we were getting to what we wanted, but it was a really long meeting. It was near the end and I don't think any of us had it in us to like articulate well. But I don't think that should really be dead yet. And I think planning commission was also in a similar boat where like, because they voted it down before it came to us. And I think for similar reasons, they were realizing that what they were voting on wasn't addressing the underlying issue, but that there is in fact an underlying issue. So I just wanted to like, so that that work wasn't wasted and I think needs to come back up. Like, I think, I think we were almost there, we just weren't there yet. And that it shouldn't just die. So I don't, again, I don't know how to articulate that direction clearly. But I do think there is a concern about junky yards and a visual issue when it's in the front and the side yard and the backyard is more appropriate. And I think there's a way we can get to that. And I think we're almost there, but not quite.
I think, I agree with you. I think that trying to describe what kind of trailer is okay and what isn't is another fence ordinance. And, you know, we could see we were going down that path and couldn't get to solving the problem with it. I'm not sure the answer either, but I know other cities do have nuisance storage ordinances. And maybe that's something that would give us a better plan of attack to actually, you know, get to the problem that we're trying to solve and leave the rest of the people alone.
Yeah. So that I just, again, so maybe that is looking at the nuisance stor, what was that, nuisance storage ordinance? So, but I just, again, I don't want, I also don't want city staff to feel like that was wasted effort. It was not. It's, we're getting there, it's just, it's a challenging nut to crack. One thing that came up when I was reading through the environmental study thing was about the smart salting training. And I was wondering if our city has done the smart salting training?
I think so.
Yes, yep. Councilmember Van Assen, we have done the salt, smart salting process, whatever. And I think we provided that, also some resources last open house as well about that because of stormwater runoff and rainwater runoff.
Yeah.
Along with like, I think it was kind of near the turf grass stuff related to the U of M, so, but we have done it.
Okay, cool, thank you. And then the other thing that came up during that study was that the Fernbrook and Rush Creek intersection, I believe it's an FF, no matter what like happens, right? Like, it's terrible. So what are we doing about that and how do we move that forward?
We're like the...
We got to fix it, so...
The Rush Creek, Fernbrook intersection.
It even needs to be a roundabout or a light. How do we make that happen?
So it'd be pressure from us to put on the county. We, Jason Quisberg, city engineer and myself, have had numerous conversations with the county and will continue to have conversations with them about stuff.
How can we support you in that?
Hammer Kevin.
Keep talking, Kevin Anderson, but I'll pass it on if you see...
Be some residents to call, of which you might get 10 of them to do it.
I was just going to say that that is an effective way. At least that's what we're told by the county is to have, have the public reach out directly.
So would it be helpful if we put together, like, here's Kevin's contact information, here are points to say, and then like, like hand it out, hand it out to concerned neighbors who can then hand it out to their concerned neighbors?
Yeah, it's similar to what Champlin did for their stop sign. It's kind of got a little coalition of neighbors together and push.
I think in our conversation Thursday with John Hoffman, he mentioned that the biggest things to get money on is roads and water. Now, whether or not we can put pressure on John to call the county, I mean, in this world, it's not what you know, it's who you know.
It's a little bit of both.
Yeah. Those two issues, the reason why Senator Hoffman's mentioning those things is those are bipartisan issues.
Yeah.
Typically, those are not going to be right or left, Republican or Democrat. Those are just human issues that everyone can get along. human issues that everyone can get along with.
Um, and then lastly, uh, this also came up earlier and I'm not sure where we went with it, but, but having some sort of rental policy. When we were talking, um, it kind of came up during, I think, our strategic planning. So I think maybe actually I'll table this and bring it back up when we get back to that. So I'm going to put a pin on that one. Okay, that was it for me.
I got enough. All right. Let's move on to item J.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Um, we're looking at the South Diamond Lake Road project, which is identified and being completed as part of the city's pavement management program. Um, so just the background on this, it is identified in the current plan. Um, it was split in the two-year period with the plan. We did some shifting just for efficiency in the project to just not break it up into multiple projects and instead include the whole road in a single year, which will be twenty twenty-five. Um, that it also was called for an overlay. We did decide to go with a mill and overlay over the whole route to avoid some shouldering and to better tie into the, um, driveways and existing roadways. We think it'll provide a, a good product and probably come in a little bit cheaper as well. Um, it's about five miles of roadway. Um, we did extend the westerly limit to include from the city border of Rogers out to Brockton Lane. We have been in contact with Rogers. Uh, they will be responsible for the costs for the portion of the project within the city of Rogers. Uh, coincidentally, it was not pre-planned, they're actually continuing west of there. So they were going to do that segment anyway, we just put it in our project instead of theirs to have a continuous pavement through that stretch. Um, likewise, we did check with Champlin, they were not interested in doing their, the portion within their city, um, out to River Road. So that will not be included with it. Um, and just to mention, um, we did include three locations to do some, uh, they're just miscellaneous, um, pavement markings to be installed. Um, I see our open forum speaker just left. One of those is the turn lanes at Rush Creek Parkway at Fernbrook. I was hoping to share that before he walked out, but, um, so that is included with it. And just to note on that, we were alerted to the situation last year. It was, uh, um, November fifteenth when we were told about it. Um, weather did not allow it to be completed next year, that's why the delay until this point. And we figure this will be the cheapest opportunity for us to get it done since there's a significant amount of, uh, striping already on the project and they'll be out in the city.
Did, Jason, did you say the milling reduces the cost?
It should reduce the overall cost, um, because you don't have to chase driveways and, um, connecting streets to, to get the pavement in. And then you don't have to put additional shouldering along the entire length because you have the added thickness. Counterintuitive because it's an extra process, but it saves a bunch of other work as well, so. And you'll see in the cost estimate, I don't know if that's the sole reason, but we are looking to be a little bit under what we expected on the project, which is, which is always good.
Well, does, did, what does that do for any transmission of, does that help or hurt transmission of cracks and?
Oh.
Oh, that's not going to stop that.
Yeah, they'll, they'll reflect through regardless.
They're going to come through.
Yeah.
The first winter, they'll break right through.
Yeah, it's, it's often within the first year, you'll see some, within two, you'll probably see most of them.
Then why would you not do milling all the time?
Oh, the, the milling doesn't change.
It's not going to stop it.
Yeah, correct.
But if it's cheaper.
Oh, um, an overlay, well, and it depends on the shouldering.
Oh, okay.
But an overlay does add structural benefit. So if there is a road where we suspect that there might not be the support that we would want, we'd want to beef it up. Putting the pavement on top does give it additional strength.
So it is always a judgment call.
Yeah, it's, and it, they're, they're pretty close. I, I'd say they're, they're essentially a wash between costs. I don't know if there's a lot of, there can be, um, in some, but yeah, it's kind of a case by case. Um, here's a depiction of the project area, um, the, the stretch of South Diamond and then just showing, um, the pavement markings. It's a few crosswalks up on Pioneer Park, Pioneer Parkway. Some striping for the turn lane at Rush Creek, um, Rush Creek Parkway, as mentioned, at Fernbrook. And then another one on territorial going into the territorial commons development, um, which we're not sure why, but that stripe and pavement marking was never installed with the development. Um, just to point out a couple of other things going on in the area. The school district is chasing some safer else to school money to do some, uh, I'll say more permanent crosswalk enhancements um, in front of the, the school. I'm sure council's aware of the delineators and the, I'll say the reddish brown painting and striping that was done as a kind of a test project. Um, they are looking at doing something more substantial, which includes a pedestrian refuge. So a raised concrete median in the middle of the roadway, very much like the one on one hundred and twenty-ninth, I'm pointing the wrong direction, um, down at John Quill. Allowing pedestrians to just cross one lane of traffic or one direction at a time. So they can go traffic only from one side to the middle and then only the other side. Um, so the pavement would be widened on top of it or to accommodate it. A, a note, um, I don't know all the timing of this thing will work. So we had another discussion, uh, just today with the school district and their consultant. Um, they're expecting to hear, they're hoping early April to see if they got the funding. They are currently working on the design. The goal is that if they get the funding, they would complete the widening or work with the city to complete the widening. That can be a later discussion, it may have to become a city project that we work with them on. Um, we can discuss that now if wanted, otherwise when we get to it. To get the widening done and then we would come in and do the pavement and then they would come back and do the striping. That, that's, if, if everything plays out well. If not, and I'll just say worst case scenario, we do our project as planned. And if they're coming back at a later date, either late this year or, uh, what would be more likely next year, they would just complete their job and then we would have a couple of cold joints at either side of this. So for efficiency's sake, we hope they work together, but if they don't, um, the consequence is not that, that large in our opinion. Um, the second one is when we inspected culverts, um, along the roadway prior to the project, we did find one to be in pretty, pretty poor condition. There's some rust in it, there's, it's actually rusted through in a couple of spots. Um, structurally, it looks fine, it's a larger pipe, I think it's a, a forty-eight inch if I remember right, or at least a thirty-six. Um, it's, if you can tell from the picture, it's from Diamond Lake down by the old public works under the roadway. Um, we do think it should be repaired. It's not necessarily urgent, but it, it should be a priority to take care of when we can. Um, our thought is it would ideally, I'll, I'll back up. So we did look at, should this be replaced completely? In other words, cut the road open and that's why we did this prior to the project, cut the road open and fully replace the pipe? Or should we use trenchless technologies to replace it? In other words, line it or slip line it with a, another coating. Um, we talked to contractors that do both types of work or a contractor that does either type of work. Um, the costs come out very close to the same, very comparable. Um, our thought is let's do the lining, the trenchless, just to disrupt, not to disrupt traffic, not to risk the settlements that might occur with it and not to go through the traffic disruption that it might bring. So that being said, we would still recommend doing this prior to the project in the off chance that something did go wrong and we ended up having to open cut. But if it's not in the budget or if it's not seen as a priority or wanting to be completed, again, it's not urgent, we could consider this at a later date too. Um, either way, we think this should be a separate project because it's, there's no similar work in our project today. And additionally, we expect it to be well under a hundred and seventy-five thousand, so we could come in with an invitational quote project, so. Um, just wanted to make mention of that, there's nothing included in this project that involves this, but that will be something brought back at a later date.
Is, is that pipe the size you would expect it to be?
Um, is it appropriately sized? Is it, yes. I, I mean, the, we, we don't have a single report of it being insufficient.
No, I guess what I'm getting at is more than much need because I guess.
Oh, for the reduced size?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we did, we, yeah, we went through some calculations on that.
Okay.
Um, the thickness of the lining in comparison, we don't have any concerns at all. It's, it's actually, they use a lead UV hardened liner, so it, it actually reduces very little in the capacity of it.
And as far as, Jason, as far as clearly this road will be redone again in the next seven to ten years again. Uh, does it, does that culvert last that long if you leave it alone now?
Hard to say, I don't know.
Hard to say, I mean, I.
I don't know what it looked like five years ago.
Right.
Well, what does it look like when it fails? Does the road collapse, is it?
Well, I, I mean, it could, I mean, that would kind of be a cata, catastrophic. Um, and, and I mean, this is the outlet of the lake, so it's a pretty significant crossing. Um, I, again, I'm, I'm not, I'm not really concerned with the, the structural integrity at this time, but it, it is certainly degrading. I mean, it is certainly rusting. It looked like a pretty localized area, so it doesn't look like the whole thing's going down. But I mean, any failure's not good, especially when you're under a busy road.
In seven or so years, would that be a total rebuild of this thing?
Um, the lining would definitely outlast that.
I mean.
The road.
Oh, um.
Because isn't this the second update we've done on this thing, the second?
Yeah, I forget.
That was about two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen.
Thirteen, I think, so it was before, it was before my time, I'm trying to remember if it was an overlay or if it was a full depth reclamation.
It was.
It was, okay.
Okay.
Um, so hopefully more life than, than additional seven before a re, full reconstruct, but of course that will be, continue to be.
I believe, Coach O'Slan, I believe two thousand six was the last full rebuild. And then it was sometime in early twenty thirteen or something, they had a mill and overlay project of that same road.
Or was it just mill?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fairly positive based on information. Two thousand six, yep. That was for a full rebuild of South Diamond Lake.
A full rebuild is about ten, twelve inches down, not?
Uh, on a road like this, it's, depending on the soils, it, it's probably anywhere from, I'd say twenty-four at an absolute minimum, but better chance thirty-six to forty-eight.
It was a.
West French Lake Road, for example, is about forty-six inches.
Six to ten inch mill, it all got added right back in and.
Yeah, so ju, just the processes, a, a mill and overlay usually take off the top half, inch and a half to two inches. Um, so you grind it off, you replace it back as it was. Um, an overlay is pavement right on top. A full depth reclamation, all of the pavement is ground up into gravel. So it, it looks all like gravel, you take the top off, you put in a whole new pavement structure on it. So that's kind of the, the steps between those. I didn't describe them in order of how significant they are. It's overlay, mill and overlay, and then full depth reclamation, and then full reconstruct in the order of how significant and expensive a project those are.
I think what Scott was getting at, and I think maybe it's a good point, is it makes sense to wait the seven year, or till the next event happens with the road to, to replace it then?
Oh, um.
I'm pretty sure that that last job was more than just a mill and overlay.
Yep, yeah, because it was, it was probably a reclamation, full depth reclamation. Um, what I was mentioning in two thousand six was a full rehab of the road.
Yeah, it was. And I mean, that made it for, what is it, twelve years?
Yes.
And then we're right where we are now.
Yeah, I, I, I would not recommend foregoing this. Um, we haven't seen signs of, um, subgrade failure or strength issues or anything to suggest that a full depth or a full reclamation is, is necessarily warranted. So, um, if it were getting closer, maybe we would want to go that route. But, um, right now, we're not really seeing the, the distresses or the failures that would suggest that. We think a routine maintenance project such as this.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not disclaiming the, uh, the mill and overlay.
Yeah.
We were talking about the culvert.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were saying forefill this and wait until we have to rebuild the whole thing.
I don't have a problem fixing the culvert either.
Oh, sure, and, and we'll continue to look at that and work with Marty and, and see. Probably we bring that back even in the next month.
If you can drop the culvert in my area.
You need one over there too?
On the park side, so that the water actually goes that way.
Um, so just a, a breakdown of the cost here, so the total construction, we're about one point three million. Um, the engineering, and I, I want to point this out ahead of time. The, the engineering proposal was prepared without the use of state aid funds. The use of state aid funds adds a lot of effort, um, for both plant production, um, we have to coordinate with the state, do everything to their standards and then coordinate the review, which we've done and we've got the approvals for. Um, but then the construction administration becomes a lot more intense as well with the, the required testing. Um, we have to do things like field interviews of staff for, um, make sure they're getting paid correctly within the, just, uh, make sure they're paying their truckers correct. There's a lot of steps with it, so, um, that price is going to, there will be a change order, uh, Councilman O'Slanic for additional engineering. We're hoping it'll be minimal. Um, we're already a little bit ahead above where we expected to be at this point. Um, but we're also hoping that we can complete the construction portion for less than we anticipated. So hopefully that's not a big extra ask, but, um, we did put in additional, I think I had like six thousand dollars in there previously for additional indirect costs. I did bump that all the way to forty. A lot of that will be for testing requirements because you do have to have in an independent tester and, and test quite frequently on the materials.
Just for your own information, Dave's taking a little bit of that pressure off of me.
Um, and then I, I just, so that comes out to a project total of one point, a little over one point four million. And then I just wanted to, uh, point out that backing out the costs expected for the pavement markings and then Rogers' contribution for their portion, um, would bring the South Diamond Lake Road cost down to, um, just under one point four. Um, and then just, um, to note the comparability of the CIP identifies a little under one point five million for that, so. Um, and just to note, uh, this will be now, as mentioned, um, the plan is to use a hundred percent municipal state aid funds to fund the project. And FYI, I, I hope I mentioned this before, but we did get a letter indicating that the approval was there for the advance. Our current balance is around four hundred, four hundred and eighty thousand or something, I think, um, dollars. But we did get approval to advance funds, so we will be able to draw enough to, to pay for this project, uh, together with the Signal project down on Dayton Parkway. Or a portion of it, I should say. And then just the project schedule here, um, we would be advertising on the twentieth, it'd get published and open bids on the eighth is the schedule. Um, that'll be back before council at the April twenty-fifth meeting, um, if the bids are found favorable and we wish to continue, um, it could be awarded at that time. Uh, we did slide the construction date back to July. Um, the reason being is for coordination of the sidewalk enhancements and then additionally to give a little bit of extra time to complete that storm sewer crossing, um, if that's the route we go. Again, we don't expect to get into the roadway, but, um, kind of a safety net, if you will, that if we run into any issues and have to disrupt the roadway, it would be prior to this project. And then final complete, or substantial final completion would be prior to the start of school, or at least substantial, I guess. I don't know what day school starts, but the fifteenth is prior to the, the start date for sure. So our recommendation is to approve plans and specifications as prepared, authorize contractor bidding. Um, and then again, continue to work with the school on their crosswalk project. And then again, we'll, we'll bring back more information on the culvert repair to be considered. So that's all I, I had, that's the action.
I think you touched on this, that the, the question around the, the funding, the municipal state aid piece. So in our packet, it said our current balance was five eighty-five.
Or five eighty, sorry, that was forty.
And that we would, or have advanced a request for an additional one point five. Will that, that essentially two million then, does that cover both of these projects, the signal and what we're anticipating this project?
So I might not have awarded that quite right. So we requested enough advance to fund a million and a half worth of projects. So the actual advance will be a little under.
About a million.
A little under the million, I think, so just, not that that makes a big difference, but, um, that one point five or that was targeted, that was, um, or the one point five, or what was it, the one point five advance? Just think it's more than that.
You're right, yep.
No, two million.
It is, yeah.
Two million.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, sorry, I'm a million off, that's why it's not coming up in my head, so I'm sorry. So the two million advance plus the five hundred thousand in there, I'm just rounding off. That includes the one point five million to fully fund this project along with the one million to put towards the Dayton Parkway. Um, signals, which is estimated at one point five million. The one million would be used together with contributions from developers in the area, um, to fund that project, so.
Okay.
Does that, I went through that in a really wonky way, so.
That's okay, I think I follow it.
Okay.
That contribution from other developers. Who?
Quick Trip.
Um, Quick Trip has integrated two prices in their, their DA and then discussions will continue with those on Southwest.
Yeah. Okay, honey, your motion is second for item J. Okay, honey, your motion is second, Bradham J.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no.
Who did you give the second to?
Uh, Scott.
I just didn't hear, I'm sad.
Okay, item K.
Oh, boy.
Here members of council, let's try to make this quick, huh? We're gonna have a continued discussion, and then we will need adoption at the end. I know that wasn't listed on the packet, but we will need to adopt a strategic plan. And I can bring it back later if you don't want to adopt it tonight, but I figured if we're gonna go through everything, might as well just discuss it and adopt it. I did, I mentioned this before, I use the same slides I did before. Successful goal setting will have us have a product that looks similar to what you have in front of you, an eleven by seventeen piece of paper, essentially of how to have strategic initiatives, which are 25 plus your goals, down to 10-year goals, and then outcomes and projects on the far right. These are your goals. I will put these back up there, so you can review those when you're going through the second half of the, of the item. In front of you is the last part of the strategic plan that we had from two meetings ago now. With the work session, I think we did a great job on the top half. It's been a bottom half off. We can always add another section of a strategic initiative if the council wants to, but let's see if we can get through this process, so. I know that we had mentioned that it's easier to redo what's on here than try to recreate. I'm happy to do either or, and I'm here to help with any questions. But I'll leave the goals up there for you guys, and if you have any questions, let me know. The floor is yours.
I gotta pull up what I had, you, what I had sent you, what is? Did you incorporate anybody's stuff?
I did not, nope.
Okay.
Nope.
Does anybody want to go first here?
One thing that we talked about, but I don't, it was right at the end, and I think Stephanie, you were the one who said it. I was in agreement, it was all good, but it was right at the end, so I'm not sure, like, everyone heard it, because we were wrapping up to go into the next meeting. When we were talking about encouraging different businesses and, and, and talking about the different kinds of businesses that we might want to see more local-based, not necessarily national, but small-scale local businesses. And Scott had said, well, who's gonna do that? And I was like, well, I could do it. And I don't, I was kind of being facetious about it, because I don't exactly have time coming out of my ears. And Stephanie, I mean, you said, like, could the EDA do something like that? And I was like, yes, that's exactly, like, that's exactly what something like the EDA could help us with, is like, if we had certain kinds of businesses we were interested in, say, hey, could you help us find a business that fills this niche? Or work with the EDA to figure out what are the niches that are not met by, because, A, I don't want to be like everybody else, but also, we just don't need to, like, Maple Grove already has their big medical complex, right, one exit before us. So it doesn't make sense for us to try to have a bunch of medical buildings, like, annexed it down. Like, that just doesn't make any sense. There's already a ton of Cub Foods, but there's not any, like, co-ops in this, like, food co-ops in the northwest metro, right? So like, helping us identify, like, what are niches that are missing from our local communities that we could, that would not only serve our own residents, but that could possibly draw in neighboring residents, because they don't have that need being met by their own community. And the EDA, I think, could be a really great partner in that. And so it was a comment that was made just at the end. And I just wanted to, like, call it out as being a good comment and, like, fully agree, and I think. So you have in here, seek out businesses more often, but I don't know if you want to, like, if you want to add, like, in partnership with the EDA, or like, work with the EDA to identify, like, because part of this, I think, is identifying what are biz, like, what are businesses that could really thrive in this northwest region that other communities don't have, right? And, and that's something that I think would go in this, and I don't know if that's a target, or I don't know if that's an action item, or if that's a goal.
I think it's an action item if you want to do something, but like I said, I gotta have a council kind of majority here. But my, you know, tidbit or action item would be work with the EDA to seek out niche businesses that are unlike neighboring communities. Does that seem?
That's, yeah.
That seem reasonable? Again, I have to have, I'm seeing one head nod, two head nods, and three head nods, okay.
I'll claim that one, I guess. It was a joint effort. Yes. So that was one, mostly, I wanted to wrap that up, because it was kind of at the last one. Can I ask some questions about things that are on here with dates, and I'm not sure if they did or did not happen? One of them is acquire land for community sports complex, and it has a date of 12/23.
Never happened either.
Nope.
Okay.
They don't have that 20, 30 million bucks.
I guess, is there still, and this might just be the people I hang out with, is there, like, still that, like, is there a drive from our residents to, is this something that's our residents really need and want? Like, you're talking to the wrong person on that one, but, so that's why.
What did the, do you remember what the survey said?
Yeah, that was one of the top things.
I don't, okay, I have to go back. I think it depends on who you talk to.
One of them was, the top one was a veterans park. That was number one. And then I think athletic field complex was like number two or three? I think it was three, actually. But it was eighty-some percent.
Did you email the new people the results of that survey?
I think so.
You did, yes.
I know a splash pad was in there, too.
It was in there. It was lower on the list, but it was in there.
Do you remember if money was associated with that one?
Let me verify.
Can you say more, do you mean about money, about how much the people are like, hey, or what are, what are you? Would you be willing to?
Yeah, because if you ask people if they want X, they will say, yes.
Oh, yeah, and then until you put a dollar amount on it, and you're like, yeah, I think so.
And then they put a value on it.
I don't believe there was a dollar one. I think it was just a very generic question of, we have parks in Dayton. Would you like to see, and then it was just open-ended question, I think.
I guess everybody's gonna say yes until they know how much it's gonna cost.
Well, and I guess I'll say unpopular opinion, as the person up here, well, we have kids around, my son around my kid's age, but we drive all the way to Noble to go and play soccer at 10 o'clock at night. And so, I mean, I'm not saying, yeah, I'm not saying that I'm, like, waving the flags for, yes, let's get a sports complex, but I would definitely be interested in talking about it, especially if, like, CDAA has, you know, they've said in the past they had money to put towards it, and it would just be.
They don't.
They don't really.
Mayor Culter, 79% either strongly support or somewhat support the construction of a large community park with athletic fields and playgrounds in the city of Dayton. So it was just kind of strongly support or somewhat support or.
Yeah, there was no money associated.
No, there was no money associated, any of the questions related to those features.
I think that the, the CDA has some money, but I don't think, A, that they would put much money down towards the initial capital, the initial cost, plus the money they do have is just much compared to what we need to spend.
It is something.
It is something.
Yeah.
I think they more have to help on, uh, because they have a quarter million bucks. Not the land. The city would own that, which is.
That would be a question to call CDA and say, hey, will you give 200? Are we, what's the number?
So, I think it's important that the city identifies the spot for it first, before CDA. I don't think we want CDA picking a spot of land for us that's gonna work for us, because then that then says we're gonna have it there, and we may not see that, as the city has a good spot for that piece of property. They can give us contacts and people of like, hey, I'm hearing from this person, that'd be great. But I think we want to have CDA help us develop the property and have us acquire it. That's from the city's perspective. I would say that we'd want to be in the driver's seat for the location.
So is this a priority?
I think it, I think it has been.
It has been, I mean.
Certainly acquiring the land.
I think of something.
We have to keep, keep pushing towards.
If something fell in our lap, we should, yeah.
I could change the term to be a community park with athletic fields and a playground instead of a large sports complex? Does that make it sound better? Does it matter what the terms are?
The other question is, we talked about this on Thursday. There has been a few opportunities that, for one reason or other, we passed on, and a lot of it was driven by past staff. Nope, that's not big enough. We gotta have 60 acres plus. Is that written in stone? Do we, do we have to have 60 acres plus, or would this community be happier than hell to have an Andrews Park right now?
How many acres is?
That's 40.
Is it 40?
That was like 33.
I think it's 40.
Yeah, it's not 60.
That includes the parking lots, right?
That's everything, that's the whole piece.
Okay. Is that in Champlin, Andrews Park? Yeah. I'm gonna go be nosy and see exactly how many acres it is. It's beautiful.
It is a nice park.
I mean, because if you go down to 40, that makes the land acquisition a little bit easier to find that chunk. I mean, I've got a couple of chunks in my mind right now, but.
Well, it's two parcels.
If we would have moved faster than Sarah, we'd have that piece right there.
It is a little less than 40, just barely under 40, Andrews Park. So if we round it math teacher, it's 40? It's 40. It's 19.15 and 19.16, so I would say we could safely say 40, and that includes the parking. Is that historically, like, the size, like, as we've been talking about this park, whatever you're, I don't want to call it a sports complex. I'm like, that gets negative, but anyway. Yeah, the sport, I will say, as someone who is not, when you hear sports complex, I'm gonna be like, calm down, your kids are not athletic, or only big athletes, right? But like, a park with some sports fields, I'm like, oh, I can get behind that. So have we historically looked at 40 acres, 60, well, what has been the size we've looked, or we have not?
It's been, so with, with Champlin, Champlin has mentioned that they'd always wanted to be bigger. So we've always said, okay, well, maybe 40 is too small, because Champlin, based on where they're at with Andrews Park, they said, you know, we'd like Andrews Park to be bigger, to try to jam, but I can't remember what their exact words were, but essentially 15 pounds of stuff into a three-pound area.
Yeah.
So we've always looked for something larger than, than 40 acres, or at least maybe the ability to expand on 40 acres. But we normally have started somewhere on 60 or 80 acres is kind of our benchmark. Doesn't mean that that's set in stone. I think that we would be happy with 40. It's just from what conversations with Champlin has said is, 40 isn't big enough for them now, and so.
I'm guessing if a 40 acre fell in our lap at a price we could afford, we'd probably jump on it.
I would agree.
I was beginning to, we weren't kind of sticking to that it has to be bigger than 60, and so we're not talking about anything that's 40, or you're just trying to get a feel for.
It did seem like that was kind of the attitude for a while.
Okay, so I guess we're saying that 40 would be fine. How do we feel about North Community Park and Rogers? That's the one that has all those baseball diamonds and the football fields and. Where's that located? So, you know where the Cub Foods is? There's the school and the Cub Foods. Oh, yeah. And the theater. It's bigger, but not by much.
That one's bigger, that's probably 45 or 50.
It's about, it's about 50-ish, 40, 49. It's a little over 50, like 51 acres with the parking. But they have one, two, three, like, when, in full baseball, because my husband, my husband and I like to go Pokemon walking, and it's a nice park to go Pokemon walking in, but at full baseball tilt, there's three, four, five, six, seven baseball diamonds. And then when it's not baseball season, they have three different football, like, they convert some of them to football fields, and then some of them get converted to soccer, depending on, like, the particular season. So, but it's, it's big and it's used, and like, so, speaking of another community, that, that gives us another reference point. So Andrews is 40, this is about 50, technically 52, I think, so it sounds like.
Yeah, I mean, so I'm trying to keep us on the path here, where we're at. Don't worry, I'm just going, the second bullet line item seems to be provide an enhanced public recreation space. I'm keeping on that land for a community park. The two, oh, in, in commodity indicators are number of park users and acreage of available green space. I don't know if you want to worry about park users and just specifically look at acreage of variable green space. If people want to use it, fantastic, it's there. But the target is essentially a community park with athletic fields, and that would change it, obviously, item E that's on the far right. Instead of being a sports complex, it would just say community park with athletic fields.
I like that better.
Does that seem like a good flow from left to right?
Yeah.
Okay, just gonna keep us on the, do we want to, my question is, do you want to remove number of park users, or is that an important item for the council to maintain as an indicator?
I don't know how you're measuring that. Yeah, I was like, how do you know?
It's, well, we sometimes will use and have either CDA or through his parties, we'll just do random tests for their staff, and they'll let us know how many people they talked to that day.
But.
That's how, that's how it's done.
Yeah, I just think, like, the number of parks and green spaces we have that don't go through official.
That's right, so we, we could remove that and just say available green space, it's there, and then if you want to use it, fantastic, we have it available. That's less arbitrary than park users.
I think so. Because we don't have a, a good method to survey all of our parks.
That sounds good.
I'll go stand in Leathers Park.
I was gonna say.
See if anybody comes soon.
Take every time one of the horseback riders goes past my house in Tom Creek Park Reserve.
So it's good. One done.
So one of the other things that's on here is environmental program curriculum established. Did that happen? It's also in the maintain, enhance, and the natural and rural community connection.
No, that was something that was initiated by the previous activity center individual, and the, that did, never came to fruition.
Okay. What was that supposed to do?
Get people out in parks and be able to create, like, some sort of science in nature.
Okay.
Kind of curriculum for, like, a bug walk and, uh, check out, see how this thing works and, you know, out in nature and kind of a, I would say, like a Cub Scout, Boy Scout kind of thing, where you can go and make a fire or whatever, those kind of things.
Not that those things can't happen, I mean, that'd be an easy thing to accomplish at Stevens.
Yeah.
Or the Eastland Nature Center.
Yeah.
That one was specifically based on the person that we had at the time and their strengths.
Okay.
So we don't have those strengths. Doesn't mean we can't do them, just it's not gonna be somebody's strength to do that item.
I think we'd be happy with just increasing the number of programs available regardless of the topic.
Okay. Do you want to still let B as a, to your point, Councilor Fasen, do you want to promote awareness of our natural resources on the end? Instead of specifically environmental programs, just have, you know, I don't know, activity recreational programs or something?
Define a program? It's just an event, is it like an ongoing? But wouldn't, couldn't that be also incorporated into the one above, where it's like, this community? Because isn't it like the same thing? Why do we need to call it out in its own specific line?
Yep, very true.
Is there a difference? As far as an event or a prog, is it a program like an ongoing thing?
I think a program is more of an ongoing thing, where you'd sign up for it.
Do we have the capacity to do that?
We would, if we had the right program. We do have a couple of programs that we've initiated since Elizabeth has started. We currently have a play, play place thing is what it's called? Toddler play place thing that we have, and it's been increasing every single week or month, or whatever she's using it, so that's fantastic. Hasn't been crazy growth, but again, starting somewhere, and it's been increasing every week. Then we have a coffee cards and cribbage or something like that. I think that's on Thursdays once or twice a month. And I have not touched base with Elizabeth on that, but we do have some programs that are starting. Those ones are free for the public to use. But we did talk, and she has talked about having some sort of programs that would be paid, like a, some sort of, and I'll use an example of like, tumbling class or something, or, you know, whatever you want to use, or something out in the field, where it'd be a, I don't know, track and field day or something, or whatever. Nothing in stone.
We could institute a fence-taking-down class at Miles. Got about a mile of it.
Pro, program?
Program.
Program.
You're gonna have someone pay to do that for you? Is this with the corrections, or is this just, who are you looking for, Scott? So could that programs line be moved up? And then this, so it's not just the environmental, or was it natural resources? So the programs could go in here?
Yep, so your, it would be, the goal would say the same, which is the third box down.
Yep.
The key indicator would say the same, participation level. In events, you could call it slash programs. And then you just say in the target, you'd say, you know, increased recreational programs.
You can easily, easily get a hold of Three Rivers. They might be able to bring somebody out here to, to have some little educational program.
They already are.
They do.
No, I mean, not to, not to the park itself. They can show up at Stevens Park.
We were just, we were just putting something at like Eastland Nature Center or something, while it's still, you know, there and whatever else, but. So is that something that the council's okay with, with the third box staying the same, down, third box in the same, down on the key indicator? But the target would change to just recreational program, continue, you know, continuation of recreational programs.
Continue, the expansion of recreational?
Expansions.
Because we're, I mean, we are expanding, right?
Yep.
Continue and expand, so continue our existing ones and expand.
I don't want to put a date on that, but that seems like something like.
Since we, did we hire an additional activity center employee?
Nope.
Okay.
We've replaced it twice.
Oh.
But there's not an additional one?
No.
Okay.
We made a full-time position into a part-time position.
Is that back?
Taken away from it?
Yes.
Okay.
We had a full-time position, then went back to a part-time twenty hours. Now it's part-time thirty-two hours. Yes.
Well, I think that target should probably be taken off then.
Yep, so I replaced that target with programs, continuation and expansion.
Okay.
Sorry, I wasn't clearing that. And then I still have item F is the same thing.
Got it, got it.
Increase activity center events. And I'll change the activity center to recreation events and programming.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, I'm, I'm good. I'm with this now.
Okay. So number one and number four are still open. We can change the whole line item for number four because it sounds like that one's either done or.
I mean, I like the goal of promote awareness of our natural resources and I'm not sure that the indicators are resident requests for information. Again, I'm not sure that indicates anything.
Do you have a suggestion?
No. So I'm not being helpful.
We can write it off.
And what, what does participation in program refer to? So it's the two key outcome indicators for that were participation in program. And what program?
The.
The pretend program that never happened?
Yes.
Okay. So obviously that's gone. And then resident requests for information. I think that's too vague and like what, like, so if I call to ask about how, where I can put my fence, is that a residence request for information? Does that, like, that's just too vague?
Most of them would be either through our app, then we now have like where a park's at or what amenities do you have at those parks? We do get those calls every once in a while, they're not often, but they are there. We get asked about what's in Three Rivers Park Districts. Elm Creek Parkers are, we go, no, I don't know. Because go ask for it.
But like, I'm not necessarily certain that that would even indicate that awareness of our natural resources, right? Because, so.
I'm not disagreeing that those indicators and the target isn't great. I'm just, I don't know, but do you want to have for the goal or do you want to just remove it?
And yeah, I mean.
I think the goal is good.
Yeah.
I think we're, you know, the rest of it was kind of set up for one.
It was specific for one item, that was correct.
But promoting awareness of our natural resources, that's a, you know, that can manifest in a bunch of different ways. I mean, how we're talking about our water trail, for example, is promoting awareness of our natural resources. What's new in the parks? I don't know, you know, how far into the weeds to get on this, but you know, we've got walking trails around these parks, Stevens Park in particular. We keep expanding. Are there elements of, of nature that can be pointed out? Say this is a two thousand year old redwood tree here in Elsie Stevens Park. You know, the natural features that don't sound as stupid as what I just said.
But.
Is that a target or an indicator? Sorry.
Yeah, well, that's where I'm.
That's where you struggle.
I'm getting into actions here and we're supposed to be talking about it at a higher level. But I'm just trying to think of what, you know, what that path would look like. We've got significant natural resources in, in a bunch of our parks. And what can we do to raise awareness? That's the effort.
So onto that, I was with a friend and I walking with her kids in a park in Minneapolis by the river. And they had these little posts about various like birds and reptiles, whatever that you can find in the park. And like, her kids love that. Like, we go looking for those things. So I think having signs like that, like keep your, like, her kids loved it and it was, so signs like that, that would go to the promoting awareness of our natural resources. But that's more of an action item than ensuring that we have. I don't even know if we have those signs. I know there's a few. They were kind of beat up and hard to read. So, you know, ensuring that we have those signs and the ones we have are in like readable condition. What I'm not sure is how do we know someone's used that, right? Like, you can put it up, how do you know they can use it? Other places that pop into my mind are having, at our open houses, having a table like that, do, like specifically for, but I think we already have that. I'm assuming the parks like, we kind of, so that's, so we're kind of already doing that is having tables at the open houses. And then is it something like use of our apps for like looking up park hours? But again, once someone's using it, they're not gonna have to go to the app to look it up. And so we don't, we're not capturing that people have already used it and I don't know.
We need a version of your Hooky Man Gold.
Yeah, collect them all. Oh, there, there is. But I'm not sure how to go from action items. Like, I don't know what your key outcome indicators would be that aren't just either way labor intensive. Like, we're not gonna ask staff member to go to a park randomly and take a tally of everyone who shows up at the park. That's just stupid.
I don't think too many staff members know too much about it.
But I mean, like, how, so I'm kind of with you. Like, I'm struggling with how do we measure that this is actually being effective? And like, what is our target? And maybe it is just more use, maybe we leave it more vague about higher use of our parks and don't worry about how we measure that. Which I hate to say those things out loud, but I don't know how you measured it.
It's a lot of things you can't.
Yeah.
When you see that overall, in fact, you know, a lot of it we don't, because you can't.
I don't, I have more ideas.
Okay.
Can we, along that line?
Yeah.
If it's those kinds of milestones where you find or we point out some particular element of the park, is there a QR code that you can scan for more information and how we captured that hit?
Yeah.
See how often those things are getting used. Again, I think we're a long ways from the original goal, but I think there's ways, you know, it has to be that kind of thing where we capture, capture people in the act of using
Yeah.
the thing so that we know, you know, do they.
It's a good use for our time and money. Like, the city's investing energy into this, are the residents using it? So, how often do we do community surveys about like how happy you are with the parks or how often you use the parks?
Well, last year, last year was our first year we've ever done one. So it's kind of our baseline.
Okay.
I believe the, at least from my perspective, I think we should do one every, or at least for, we should probably do one next year just to get a good baseline again. And after that, probably every three years or so.
We may have, you know, I think some of those questions, I think there's a lot of.
Want for improvement?
Yeah, those questions came directly from the Morse Leatherman Company. A lot of them did. It was a community engagement type survey. There was a few questions that were specific to us, as you know, but.
Yeah.
But there was a lot of, but it was like twenty grand?
Yeah, eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand.
Yeah.
Which, you know, it's eighteen grand, but to find out what, yeah. I get the feeling that's a fairly accurate.
Okay, so then a key outcome indicator would be on, on the somewhat regular survey that like, that our residents, what, and I, I looked at the survey at the time and I have not, so in my mind, I'm not sure exactly. I'm assuming they asked questions about park usage. But, you know, so whatever this key outcome indicator would have to be written in such a way that makes sense with that question. Basically, are our residents, like, are they indicating that they're using the parks and are they happy with their park experience, right? And that a key outcome indicator that the survey is staying at a certain level or going up, right? Not declining. Because you don't want to say, you never want to say you're always going to improve because at a certain point. Yes, you're gonna be there. So, but like that we have a certain threshold that we're here or higher.
The resident usage is favorable for park usage.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Okay, that seems like a.
But that would be a good key outcome indicator that would be not.
Nope, that's a great one.
Us standing there.
Do you have targets at all that you want to use to get there? Like, you know, you gotta, the target would be what number do you want to maintain? Seventy percent favorable mass, sixty percent of it?
I don't know where our baseline is, so I'd have to look at our baseline and then go from there, but.
The only line we got is seventy-nine percent.
That's the one for the athletic complex. I think he used the baseline of sixty percent. It's kind of like the cutoff of anything below sixty percent. It's not favorable to do. You know, like pickleball courts was one of that said that they want to have more or less, and it was fifty percent. With strongly support or somewhat support.
I don't know.
So I said, okay, we're not, we shouldn't be focusing on those, yep.
No pickleball courts.
But additional pedestrian and biking trails was eighty-one percent.
Okay.
So we should probably focus on getting those.
Yeah. But as far as like, so the goal is promote awareness of our natural resources. And so one of them is like, so if we're promoting awareness, the survey question can be, are you aware of these parks? And if they say, yes, I am aware of the park, then like we're done, but they're not necessarily using it, but I'm getting myself.
Would you just say it's some sort of like, you use the strong support, somewhat or like, agree, somewhat agree, somewhat disagree and disagree kind of thing? Because he doesn't like the middle one, because everyone picks the middle answer.
Yeah.
But you'd say, you know, do you, have you used this park or have you, do you consider this park somewhere you'd bring your, you know, family or something like that? We'd, some sort of frame, phrase a question around it.
Yeah, so it's like, yeah, and I hesitate to put a target number there without having looked at the data, but wherever we are right now, like, where was the threshold of this survey? There or higher.
Like I said, I think the number that he used for anything that he should move forward with was sixty percent for Peter Lada.
Sixty percent or higher?
And again, we can adjust this. This is going to be looked at annually. We can help with adjusting. Go ahead, this, probably should bump that up.
Does that feel like we've helped then with this one?
Yep.
Okay.
At least in my eyes, like, this is your, this is your document. I'm just here to help. Do you have one suggestion for action items? Do you want me to, there's a water trail study in the far right there. I was gonna say water trails completion of two phases or, you know, maybe water trails in and an out spot, because that is an action item that probably completed this year, hopefully.
So, so B in the action item.
It says water trail study. We did that.
So water trail build out or water?
Build out would work, yep. I think that would, that would work. And like I said, this year we should have both an in and an out by the end of the year. So hopefully that's something we can check off next year and move forward with, but.
Will the DNR thing kind of consume a lot?
Yep, the DNR will be the in and then the out will be at Elsie Stevens.
How far is, how far is that?
Good question. It's probably a few miles.
Four, five, probably about, yeah.
If anyone in the rivers go and see they're really fast.
You'll blink and you'll be like, oh, now we're done.
There is more, so I just want to make sure that everyone's aware in the council that Ozzy was putting one in, I think at their river. River Park, I can't remember what the name of the park is now, but.
Is that one like behind?
It's in a neighborhood way back.
Back in a bush back there.
Yeah, back in the, there's a neighborhood way back. They're still putting one there. And then Champlin is also looking at trying to figure out if they can pull one.
Is there any discussion of like also doing like a bike rental so that you can like take the kayak there and then rent a bike to get back to your vehicle?
Great point.
Because I got on the kayak, I went down and now I'm here and my car.
That's where you gotta have someone. That's a two-person deal there.
I know, and it shouldn't be. And it would make sense to have a bike rental at one.
Would you like to put that as an action?
Yes, I would like to put an action item, because they have the bike rentals at the other.
I don't know if that'll be completed this year.
No, but I mean, the action items don't have to be completed this year, right? And maybe it is just look into a bike rental.
Who has those?
They were.
Probably Theodore or Worth or down to Minneapolis someplace.
Yeah, but they're, but it's.
Not here. Nowhere here.
But it's the same idea. You take the kayak here and then you can rent a bike and bike it back up to where your vehicle is and.
What are you gonna do with the kayak?
They have a little stand that you put it in. You get your money, like, there's the whole thing that you.
Oh.
It's like kind of like.
You leave the kayak on the other end.
You leave the kayak on the other end.
I mean, we're a long ways from, we're five, ten years old.
Well, I know that. I'm not saying it's gonna happen next year, but I think right now to do this requires two vehicles and at least two drivers, right? But I think we should long-term be thinking about how you could do this, even if it's not just one, like if you have kids, like if I want to do this with my kids, I'm not, unless you're my mom, you're not letting your eight-year-old drive the car.
You shouldn't really do it by yourself anyway, because otherwise Gary's gotta come and rescue you if you tip over.
Hopefully not. But you don't need two drivers and two vehicles is my point. It should be able to do something with one vehicle. And so I do think long-term a bike rental, doing some sort of thinking about how a bike rental could be incorporated in this would be a good thing.
Is the council and am I seeing head nods or head shakes?
Three Rivers Park doesn't even rent out bikes.
Not yet.
It's been there for twenty, it's been there since I have.
I got one, yes. I got one, no. I got.
I'm a long ways.
I got two, I don't know.
I'm not saying we're gonna do it this year.
We can say investigate.
Investigate. Can we say investigate? Should we investigate it?
Who's gonna ban the bike rental? Now you're talking city employees.
Three Rivers Park.
Does it have to be a bike rental? Could it just be an option to make that a circular kind of route, if you will?
Yeah, so what I would say is be look at or investigate a kayak slash bike rental. Doesn't mean it has to be both.
Yeah.
Put in their, put in their partner with Three Rivers.
Look to partner with rivers.
Right. Let's get them to pay for it.
After we take them off about you're not gonna get any more money from the Mississippi.
Love to do that.
By the way, we would like some money from you.
We are not hiring employees to run a bike rental.
I'm not saying we should hire employees to run a bike rental. It's a very hands-off what they have it done in Minneapolis, so.
I got that for number four. Do we want to touch back on facilitate an interconnected trail system? Trying to keep us moving here, so, sorry.
Good luck.
I'm trying to, trying to get through a great conversation, but. Do we want to touch base on number one? Do we want to worry about that?
Which one are you on?
Number one.
The facilitate.
Facilitate interconnected trail system.
I mean, I still want to do that. And I think we've been working on that, right?
Yeah, I sent Hoffman an email about getting me a, a crossing on Fernbrook. A flyover.
Did he respond to you?
He didn't respond.
Yeah.
I'm gonna call him. He likes talking to me. Likes filling me full of BS.
He's a talker, yeah.
He's got a lot of hot air, you know?
Sounds great. So we're good with goal of facilitate an interconnected trail system?
I mean, I like it.
Okay, that's good. Number of miles of trail seems like good.
I think, I mean, that, well, and also.
Indicator.
We want to increase, but, I mean, I'm good with it. I'm not saying to take it away. I'm wondering if we want to also add, like, more on the minimum, like, how do we make sure that everything is in fact interconnected, right? Like, is there a way to measure how many, it's like you were talking about that one connection, we were talking about the last meeting or the meeting before would connect this huge chunk with this huge chunk.
Yep.
Like, can we identify those key, like, like, make sure all of our big chunks are connected? I don't know how to say that.
You can make a map that shows.
Well, they can think of as number of homes connected on a one-trail system.
Yeah, our number of residents.
Number of residents able to connect to Elm Creek Park Reserve.
Yeah.
That seem.
Yeah, I think that's a good indicator. I mean, because a long-term goal would be that every resident could get to.
Currently, there's only so many homes that are, none of our big neighborhoods are connected to Elm Creek Park Reserve currently.
Okay.
So, Brayburn Trails, Sunday, I mean, they technically are connected, but are you gonna cross your Rush Creek Parkway and Fernbrook?
Depends, depends on who you talk to.
I think we just learned that no, you should not. But I think that would be a key outcome indicator that, like, that our, all of our residents can get to the Elm Creek Park Reserve and ideally whatever the Mississippi Trail is. Because that's a long-term, right? Like, that's not something we're gonna do this year, but like that is our long-term goal, or well, heading towards our long-term goal.
And then the target is to gaps and trails connected? I don't know if we should add water in there, should just leave trails connected? I think we could just cross out water and pave.
Yeah, kind of implied.
And then make one connection on the comprehensive trail plan. Those are the target. And that's only, and that's one that we're working on right now. That's the North Diamond Lake Road one between Elm Gardens and Pineview.
Elm Pineview.
Don't know what's.
Do you want to say like make one additional every year or?
Pine, pine wood.
Yeah.
Do you want to try to do one a year? Seems to be a lot.
There's only a handful that we can do possibly, right? Or not even.
Yeah, not really. And this is kind of the only one. And then we, otherwise we have to acquire right away, which is on the far right of an action item to get like Brayburn Trails and Sundance Greens and all those attached to.
So what do we want to say? Work towards the connections on it, like on, on.
Well, Brayburn Trails will connect to all the Sundance.
It will.
Yeah. And that'll in turn connect to.
With a legacy project from Three Rivers Park District, can safely cross Fernbrook, yes. Agreed?
So are we taking off the make one connection on the comprehensive trail plan?
What's that?
Are we taking off make one connection on the comprehensive trail plan or are we keeping it? Are we working towards it? Because some of them are outside of our ability right now.
Just put work towards making.
Work towards.
Okay. Everyone okay with work towards?
Yeah.
Everyone loves this, I think everyone loves this exercise. We'll start doing this every.
The next one, the signs thing, that'll be interesting.
Okay.
The what?
So on the far right action item, so we got the left one, three done, which is fantastic. Thank you. Do we want, I'm going to go hit A, do we want to continue to acquire trail right-of-way? We haven't been actively doing that, but again, it doesn't mean that we can't use that as an action item, but.
Any, any development, we try to get something.
We try to, yeah, but I mean, it doesn't have to be active, it can be through development, okay? Water trails, we touched base on that one. C is your point, because we've been asking about the environmental signage of parks and trails, that's like the QR code or the information on those, that seems to be something that we touch base on. Diamond Lake Improvements Master Plan?
What's that about?
I'm going to look to Jason Quisberg, even though he's not really paying attention. Diamond Lake Improvements Master Plan, I think that's related to like the, the.
Yeah, it's a overall lake management plan to help, I think probably mostly for the vegetation control, the curly leaf pond weed. But different steps that can be taken to improve the quality of the lake overall.
And are we doing those things?
Um, if we get funding for it.
Okay.
So we have those on the CIP because that looks good for funding applications to say that we've identified it as a priority. So we keep them on there, we chase opportunities when they come.
Okay.
And then when we get the grant money, we consider them.
Okay.
The DNR has been putting in money for that.
Diamond Lake.
Yes.
They've been doing it every year.
For the curly.
Um, to do the curly leaf treatment.
Yeah.
We actively do that every year, yes.
Okay, so we are, so we are doing that.
We are doing it, yeah.
So then, then it should stay. So I guess my question is, A, are we doing it, and B, do we need to keep doing it? And it's yes and yes, okay.
Sounds like those both are, yep. So I'm good, E's good, because we changed that to sports complex to park with leg fields.
I like that better.
F is the same thing, except we changed activity center to recreation. And then G, we talked about looking into park bike rentals for partnering with Three Rivers Park District for kayak slash bike rentals for water trails.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
You're humoring me on that one.
Yep, that's not me, it's the council, just trying to help the process. Okay, so those are good. We got one last one, and then we're out of here. Foster safe and welcoming community. Um, I do want to hop back while we got a minute to go back to action items up on E. And there's two Es that are in the top right corner that are red. Review options for Dayton Parkway, that was, came up at the meeting, we didn't touch base on that, but I think it's an action item to talk about with building, maintaining quality infrastructure. And then the corridor study is related to Fernbrook.
Okay.
So I didn't add Fernbrook in there, but that's what the corridor study is for. And we are currently working with the county to figure out if we can do a corridor study that hopefully will assist us with pushing on the county. Yep.
And that's related to the road?
Yes, road, road of Fernbrook, or what is it, 121, 121, there you go, yep. Are you guys good with both of those being on there? One of them that come up that I've heard about a few times is the const large area plans. And having a larger plan done.
Yeah.
Is it in more, I think it's more in the second line item? Second section, encourage diversity and manage thoughtful development?
Yes.
Completing a large, a large area plan or some sort of.
I think to me, yeah. Some less random way of kind of, I mean, right now, we, we don't have, other than the comp plan, which is inherently dynamic, um, we don't, we don't plan out developments. We don't even guide developments, and so my thinking was is that instead of having these hundred-acre chunks that get developed, that we look at an area and kind of roughly plan out a three-hundred acre or so, that says this is a good area for ponding, this is a good area for parks, et cetera. That's what that really means. It doesn't mean that we dictate the whole thing, it just means that we have some idea of what we're doing in this chunk of land. The other thing it does is we can then pull that chunk of land out and put it in current, and this gets back to how.
It definitely makes it more efficient for development.
The kind of, well, and the kind of runaway development we had, um, you know, three, four years ago, where, you know, I really don't believe, I'm not sure staff was keeping up with all the stuff happening. Because we had 2,000 acres in, in, with the last comp plan, in that staging time, and it could have been all consumed in one year, so it helps with that, I think, so. It just helps, I, I think it helps overall. Yes, it, it gives us a little bit of a, a way to get a hold on the amount of land that gets processed instead of a, you know, kind of a free-for-all.
Can I ask a question?
Nope.
Identifying those chunks, right, so you're talking like 300 acres at a time.
Yeah.
Is that driven by how, like the comp plan, when we redo it, all of that, like how we see that development going? Or is that driven by like residents, is that, like, who decides what area we study? Um, and.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't have a lot of landowners, like one, two, that maybe like own that much or one that owns that much continuous land. And so I guess I'm just wondering, like, is that us saying, hey, this area is where we would like development to move from, and we're going to study your properties and, like, people are like, oh, no, like, we had, with the problem with the master plan this last go-around, people are like, I'm not, that's not going to be there, and you're like, yes, this is 20, 30, whatever, years from now? And so I'm just wondering, like, how do you decide what you study?
Wherever the pipe is, or wherever the pipe is going.
Yeah, I mean, it's not much, um, it's not too dissimilar from, right now, what we do is we, we stage these huge chunks, huge areas, based on where the pipes at. It's probably similar to that, except in that large area plan that got rejected, didn't, wasn't, well, trying to minimize the editorializing, but that was, that was going to start out as one of these things. And suddenly, there was a city center in it, and suddenly it was 600 acres.
Yeah.
It just.
And it wasn't where there's any pipe?
Well, yeah, it's.
There's water, but no sewer.
Yeah.
But I mean, like, I think to the point is, we should start where there is already, like.
Well, it, it is, it was on 117, so, um, it kind of was. It's just, it, yeah, personalizing got out of hand, but, um.
So do you want to write something like an action item of a 300-acre large area concept plan or larger area planning?
I don't know, maybe it's one of these things that we study, I, I don't know. My understanding is that, and maybe Jason, you can help with it, doesn't Maple Grove kind of do this? Where they look at, I mean, this, this last thing that they looked at was like, I thought it was 350 acres that they kind of laid out.
It, it could, I, I haven't worked with their planning department much. I think you're right, I think they do look at some, some bigger areas.
Because I think, I don't know if I'm thinking the same thing, but my, I have thoughts around like, um, where some, the, at the last planning commission meeting, there's that chunk by the cubes that like wants to develop, and one of the things that kept coming up is like, but what's going to be next to you? Because if what's going to be next to you is this, then you got to think about a road all the way through. Like, yes, you don't need that road right now for this, because right next to you is a farm field, but if that's also going to be, so is that kind of what you're thinking about, like?
Yes.
A little more zoomed out, and so that when a development or someone comes in and says, we want to put this here, and we're like, yes, and we appreciate that, right now that's a farm field next to you, but it's not going to be, so we're going to need a road all the way through. It's like, we have to plan for that now. And to me, I would target the ones that are, that are prime for like, like all the pipe is there, you know, like everything's ready to go. And if someone came to us today, we, we don't actually have any reason to say no to them currently, so we kind of have to say yes, except for we don't, we don't have the full plan.
Yes, it, we, we seen some of that at the last planning commission meeting with the, with the DDL prep.
Yeah.
What was going to happen next to it? And, yeah, it's, it's a similar deal, where now we have to make a decision on this property, and it may not be a, a good one long-term for those other properties.
Yeah, but we don't have a plan for the other properties, so therefore we're kind of in this stuff, but they're ready to go.
So we would do this after we finish the next comp plan, or we would do this?
We'd probably do it beforehand.
Yeah.
Before, yeah.
To try to help us plan for that.
So then it would kind of dictate what, okay. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to like get my, what the layers here are, because they're all very, they're stacking.
It may be just that we look into it and try to figure out if that's a, a better path. I just, I just think the path that we've been on, where we just have a chunk of land come in, and worst case, they meet all the zoning requirements and it just happens.
Yeah, larger area planning will also help with making, like I said, more efficient, because if we can look at a whole area and say, this is where we want to have stormwater ponding, for example, we tried to do this with the cubes building and with inland down on the Dayton Parkway and 81. We said, we need a regional pond here, because it would make the land more efficient for everybody. Well, what happened is then this one came in, and then this one came in, and this one came in, and they all ended up getting an individual stormwater pond instead of a regional ponding area.
Yeah.
Which then made more stormwater ponding, which means more maintenance for us, because everyone couldn't agree on where to put the same stormwater pond, even though if we would have planned it out, to your point, we could have said, this is where the stormwater pond goes, and this is regional pond.
There was a little bit of that done with.
There's some done on over here, yep.
And there was some coordination.
Yep.
And I just, I seen that, and it just made sense to me that we would do.
We did, we did the regional stormwater ponding over here on Balsam Lane with the, um, Balsam, whatever, the apartments and then the tunnels next door.
Yeah, I, I like that, we should do that.
So larger area planning.
Yes. And do we work with like the planning commission to identify where, or, or is that for later?
Later, kind of.
Okay.
I'll just say larger area plan and then.
Okay.
It'll come back.
Okay. I like that.
Okay, um, I'm good with the top three, if everyone else is good with those, I think, and then we'll move on to the fourth one. Hopefully this is, that's somewhat simple, but we'll see. Take it away. Everyone, you guys want to work on first, one through four, or totally reach them up, and we can create six or go under two?
Um, so the first one, maybe, maybe let's go in order so that we're not bouncing around confused. And maybe I only speak for myself and being confused. Communicate transparently and effectively, I like that, I think that's a good goal. Citizen participation, participation and feedback, I think that's a good indicator. Increased website visits, are we, I'm not opposed to that, but are we trying to have a more social media presence? Should that be included? When we say increased website visits, do we only care about our website, or do we also want to include like engagement with like our Facebook page? Do we, like, what else would, would go with that? Do we care about our Facebook page?
Only when we're trying to say something.
Were you asking? So there has been a strong push, Mayor Council, there's been a strong push from lots of local governments to not have so much of a presence on social media, only because of all the.
Crap?
Stuff that comes on, on with it. There has been more of a presence to move towards that app-based program, which is why we did it.
Okay.
And I will say that it may not have taken off like we had hoped, but I think our, our idea is to kind of revitalize that app and kind of pushing information to people.
Okay.
I think it's important that we get feedback, don't get me wrong, it's just, um, the world of social media gets lots of keyboard warriors behind the screen, and then you end up with, you started with one topic and you end up with that topic, and that's not where we're headed, so.
Well, and it also.
That's just been pushed by local governments in general.
Well, and it also gets awkward for violating open meeting laws. Because then like, we can't engage, but residents don't realize why we can't engage, and so then they get like.
At the time we had this, this plan was, we didn't have the app. I could say that maybe increased app downloads or increased app presence would be something that I would include on there?
Yes, I would, I guess that's my question is, like, are, what else are we doing besides the website? So increased website visits and increased app usage or downloads? I didn't realize we had an app, I'll download it.
We do, I will say that the presence of it hasn't been fantastic. We had some things that we thought were going to be on there, and now they're not, so.
Okay.
We're working, we're working on some things still.
So that is, is that an action item, continue to improve the app?
Um, yes, that would be something that we have to do as an action item, yep. I'm going to rate that as, currently will be G.
Okay. And then we're in the process of updating the website.
Yep.
So that is something we're actively doing as we speak. So would that be an action item, since we're doing it so that we can check it off next year?
It's up to the council. Do you guys want to have it on there? It will be done this year, so. Does it, it's already under the way, so I don't know if it works.
All right, that's where I wasn't sure it gets to count, since it's already having.
You want to put it on there so we can cross that texture? Makes you feel better?
Well.
It will be done, I can promise you it will be done, so. To you.
Flip a coin. I don't, if it's, if it's in the works, then it's going to be done.
It will be done no matter what, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think it, you know, but.
Then don't worry about it.
Okay. Are we good with that one?
Is that part of the digitize for the action items, is the digitized files for accessibility and discovery, is that part of that communication?
Part of that one, yes.
Okay.
We did that for all of the files we have for addressing.
Okay.
Um, we are now waiting to do our next project, which will be all of our permanent files, which is an insane number. We have a lot of files that are forever, you have to hold on to them forever. We have files from 1970-something in the back, so.
Cool.
If you'd like to go, you can find the paper. The problem is the paper at that time.
Yeah.
Isn't the most fantastic.
Yeah.
It does, it's still there, but, so that, the next skill is to again do the next process, which is permanent files. That also does help with our record retention as well, so we don't have nearly as much space that's dedicated to record retention, and we can use it on our, we have global search currently is what we use.
Okay.
It's somewhat like a laser feature of the program.
So that's in progress, but that's part of that.
It is progress, and I think it should stay on there, because it's continued to be a prerogative for us as staff, at least for, continued to help with, plus it makes it way easier for resident calls and wants this thing. We can get it in three minutes versus having to go dig two files.
I'll call you back in three months after I make it through the archives, okay?
It's, um, be bad at times.
Okay, so does that cover our first line?
Yep.
So, um, promote public safety engagement, great, good for that. Number of code and safety violations, do we want to specify that we want that to go down? We want it to go up, and so, like, number of miles of trails, the implication is we want that to increase. And then the next one is number of code and safety violations, so based on every other number on here, that should go up, and I don't think we want that to go up. So do we want to say decrease the number of code and safety violations?
I don't see how you're going to do, the bigger you get, the more problems you're going to have.
So then should that be on there at all?
I don't know if that's what we want to measure, because of what you just said.
Yeah.
You know, increasing public safety might be increasing that number.
Yeah, so, so I think we should take that off as an indicator.
Okay.
Because I don't, yeah.
Well, yeah.
I don't know what the indicator is. And so, oh yeah, same with decreased number of violations, yeah.
You want to remove that whole line item? Do you want to change the indicator?
I'm not even sure.
Do you want to change the goal?
Well, it, it only makes sense to me, the more people you get, the more problems you're going to have. All your violations, there's going to be more problems with the bigger we get. It just goes with the territory. I mean, you can, you can say you want to decrease all that stuff, but, I mean, it's not going to happen.
No, but I mean, I'm just, the overall goal of promote public safety engagement, but to me, that means like having good relationship with our police officers and our fire department, and then, and, you know, their departments having good relationships with our citizens, right? Like, that's what that goal means to me, and neither the indicator or the target has anything to do with those things.
You want to have that one something to do with the survey?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if the residents are expressing, it's better than that, the survey.
I don't even know where this came from, again, this is.
Yeah, bad, and we'll take it off.
We can remove it, yeah.
But I think survey feedback of like how residents view, you know, their interactions or, I don't know what this, I mean. or, I don't know what this, I mean.
This safety, just in general, like.
Well, we.
We did that question.
Thinking in a different direction around that topic. We've talked a couple of different ways around bringing back the Public Safety Committee Commission under some new charter.
Yeah.
You know, by its nature, that would engage.
The community.
Or by people.
Yeah.
But I think that that could be, you know, again, part of that overarching thing of awareness and collaboration with the community and our public safety.
Oh, absolutely.
Folks.
And it'd be a good forum, it'd be a forum where people could bring concerns out, you know, just like at the planning commission and the parks commission, like it's a chance for citizens to come to those organizations in a somewhat more neutral place and be like, these are my concerns. So I, I like that a lot. I think it should come back. And I think that fits with promote public safety engagement. So would the indicator be that we have re, redeveloped this, or reinstated?
That would be an action item?
That, okay, the action item. Are you not okay with that?
I, I think I am. I, I just, I'm not sure. Um, I mean, there's adding committees as, as goods and beds to it, but, yeah.
I think there's got to be clear direction on that.
Okay.
I think that's what we ran away on the last time.
I think we're struggling even with the EDA and having clear direction on what their role is and what they do, and we have a committee that I hear people say, what do they do? What are they working on? Are they doing anything? So I think that just coming up with a committee or reinstating it will only be successful if there's clear direction of what you're wanting out of it.
What about like the neighborhood watch? In lieu of making a whole nother committee, like.
You mean actually adding to their purpose or what?
Well, no, I just mean like we have.
Yeah, we do have.
We have a neighborhood watch.
We do, I, yes, we have one, I know, I'm high up on with ours. But I'm just saying that, like, do you need a whole public safety committee if you already have?
Maybe you get more feedback from the neighborhood watch?
That's what I'm wondering, like, could you, I know they have like their first meeting, and then somebody decides they're going to be your main person, and then they bombard you seventy times about joining and being their second? So I was, maybe there's just more.
I've not gotten that experience, but.
Oh, well, you come to my neighborhood. No, it's wonderful, and it's like got a great purpose, but I'm just wondering, like, instead of making a whole nother committee, do you maybe just get more engagement with that? And Paul's going to say something against the neighborhood watch?
Four against?
Four against, like, add more engagement?
I know it's three four, I guess.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the only thing that would concern me with that is you're having a lot of more say and not control.
Okay.
Um, with the committee, at least you have clear general lines of communication, um, and what their path or goal, ultimate goal is for the public safety. When you continue to add, I think, I don't have a number off my head, but I know we have a lot of neighborhood watch groups, and that would just add to the.
Yeah, I thought it was.
There's a lot.
Yeah. And I don't know that their scopes, that their overlap much compared to a committee, but.
I just meant to have clear direction for a committee, if that's what you're wanting to do.
Yeah. Yeah, if we were to go the route of adding this committee, it would need very.
I'll, I'll put that as a, as an action item, doesn't mean we have to initiate, it could be somebody.
What is their normal role?
Well, that, that was.
The question?
That was the problem.
Okay. I guess that's kind of what I'm wondering, is like, does the committee, like, what does having committee do for the residents? Like, what is it, what's the normal function?
Okay, my guess is.
Is it needed? I guess is my thing. Because as far as I go, like, promote public safety engagement, the fire department already does that, the police department already does that, they go at all of the events, like, at the schools, they have their own, so like, I guess I'm wondering, do you, if we don't know what a committee's going to give us, do we really need one?
Well, that, that would be the, that would be the question.
That's the question, yeah, so investigating would be, what are we getting out of it? If we're not getting anything out of it that we need, then don't do it.
The other thing is, are you going to get anybody to manage?
Projects that are coming in.
It makes, yeah.
I think that's where we're struggling with our other committees, is there's not clear direction or purpose.
Um, so going back to, because I agree with you, um, but I think we all, do we all agree though that we like to promote public safety engagement as a goal?
My question to you is, I was going to ask you on the income, outcome indicator.
Yes.
Do you want it to be about response time? Because that was a question this year.
Okay.
Or do you want it to be, are you satisfied with the services provided by police and fire, as in happy, somewhat happy, somewhat not happy?
Yes. That, that is the indicator.
I think response time is a good indicator of how.
As, as your, do you have any input on these things, since they're your departments?
Mayor, members of council, um, so just to step back for a second, so the committee that I suggested for public safety, or that we've discussed in the past, was my experience at, when I was at the city of Wilmer. I know Paul loves that I have the mic right now, too, but, um, the reality is, is it was a couple council members, um, along with one or two, um, public, members of the public, and it was an opportunity for fire and public works, as a public works, public safety committee. So it was an opportunity to bring things up, that committee in advance of the, uh, meeting here, and to give a couple of the council members an understanding of kind of what we're trying to accomplish, if you will, just really having that more open dialogue, um, is kind of the, the bigger thing with, in that capacity. From a response time perspective, kind of circling back to that, um, that was one of my questions that Zach had asked council. We have that information, I'm happy to put it out there. Just want it to be clean for you, so it's understandable. I don't know what you saw, if that makes sense or not. It may not, so I'm happy to have further discussion about that, because like I said, it is kind of confusing, we're talking to the median, and I know a couple of you love math up there, so it's probably not a big deal, but, um, I want to just make, you know, throw it out there, what you're looking for, so I can help clarify that.
And then, good clarification, so appreciate that. Survey results for the police overall, police and fire overall, police overall, not happy to not happy basically on that scale, whereas I question survey results. And then what's your target? More happy than not happy here?
I mean, yeah, basically. More happy than not.
Sixty percent again, or?
Sixty percent.
Happier.
I'd probably even say you want that a little higher.
Yeah.
Seventy-five.
Yeah.
Well, again, I don't know what our baseline is, right? So.
I don't have a good baseline for you this year, because the question wasn't that.
I think it was pretty high.
I think it was pretty high, yeah.
Yeah, it was pretty high.
So I want to stay as high or higher, right? But I don't know what that is. I just hesitate to put toward, I, I.
This year, um, responses were excellent or good, so I'll say at least good for police protection, was ninety-six percent.
Awesome.
So there you go.
And fire was ninety-five.
So ninety percent or higher? I mean, because at a certain point, you can't get higher than that, right? Like, you don't want to say a hundred percent, because that's unrealistic, so I think ninety percent are, and as we grow.
Sixty's way too low.
Sixty's way too low, but as someone who has had my job.
Sure, I mean, way too low.
Been put on the line because other people who had no idea what I did, put a number on me that they pulled straight out of thin air. I did not want to be that person. But if we have survey baselines in the nineties, I think it's not, it's reasonable to stay at ninety or higher.
Yeah, those are our two highest rated.
Yes.
Services for city.
Okay.
That's just satisfaction, or that's response time?
Yeah, so it said, what do you feel about city services? Let me know what your qual, what you would rate the quality of the service that you receive.
Okay, that's what I wanted to.
Excellent, good, only fair report.
And I don't. I think the feedback behind the question was also, the residents being surveyed didn't necessarily use the services.
Correct, yeah. Or if they show up, everybody's happy. Like, in an emergency, you don't really know how much time has passed, some, a lot of times, just you just know that you see the red lights and you feel a little bit better.
Well, and the one thing I don't want to go much higher than ninety, I want to circle back to that, though, is because as we grow, we're just going to have more people who are going to be unhappy, like, I don't want to put a number that is unreasonable. So the fact that we are at in the high nineties is amazing, and yay, and I don't want us to, like, drop from that, but I also, I hesitate to put a number that as the city gets bigger is something that we'll just never be able to reach again.
And we could set baselines every year.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I recommend not putting a high number.
Yes.
Um, just because of the fact that we are getting busier.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we have one minimum of a cop on, so if we're tied up on calls, it's going to be a longer response time, so.
Yeah.
Um, as we get busier, I think we're up two-hundred-and-fifty incidents to date already, so, um, just a recommendation to keep it a realistic number.
Thank you.
We could set it at eighty-five.
Eighty-five?
Eighty-five, or eighty's even.
Let's just do eighty, let's do, let's do eighty, maybe.
Let's do eighty percent for now, and if you come back with the next survey, and it drops a lot, we'll talk about it.
Yes.
I don't think it's going to drop from ninety-six to eighty, but.
No, but just, I don't, again, I've been in the, I've been in that boat where someone put this stupid number on you, and then said, here, reach it, and I was like, that's impossible.
That was Elon. Elon put a number on you, you have to answer, fill in your report for the week.
We're not going there, Scott.
All right, so we got that one, okay. Third one, maintain, we'll train the workforce.
Yeah, I don't know, this is another one where it's, the indicators and targets are going to be, well, I guess the training requirements are.
Yes.
Easy. I mean, that's an easy target thing.
Have we met that? Has a hundred percent staff met citywide training requirements?
Depends on what kind of training you want.
Yeah, because now we do, so, um, Chief Henderson has implemented the safety requirements for Safe Fisher, so we use Safe Fisher now to do all of our safety requirements and training, so all of the staff meet all like the bloodwork pathogen and the right to know and all of those type of things.
That's awesome.
So, yes, we have met that, it was not twenty-twenty-two, we met it.
But you met it.
We did meet it after that.
But I think it has to stay, because the train's never going to go away, so like, we need to continue. It's not like that's a one and done, and you're going to get new hires, so. Um, what about the less than five percent turnover rate? Have, have we kept that? And is that reasonable?
Since twenty-three, I think we have, but not before that. I think there was pretty close to, in City Hall, it was about a hundred and ninety percent?
Ninety percent, yeah, I know. I've heard.
Turnover, not.
I don't know that that's also a good indicator.
No, because you could.
Since twenty-three, we haven't, I think we only have few.
No, but just in general, though, like, you guys are great, I'm not saying, but like, you could also, on the flip side, have a bunch of people that you, that are miserable, like, you know what I mean? Just because people are staying doesn't mean your city's working effectively and you want them all to stay. So, on the flip side, we don't want them all abandoning ship every other year and having to start from scratch every other year, so like, I just don't think that's the best target, because it could go either way.
Yeah, it's not, and it's not a good indicator.
So do you now want to have the turnover rate as the indicator?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. I don't think that's a good.
And that'll be removed then out of the.
Yeah.
Target?
Yeah.
You're still good with head of the training targets?
Yes.
Hundred percent citywide?
Yeah.
I would remove the data out of that, so.
And same for that's the key outcome indicator, right, is training targets?
Hundred percent, I think we should contain.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Um, and that goes to the well-trained workforce, it's kind of right there in the name. Um, I mean, I understand, and I don't know if we want to, but then it goes to how do you measure reasonable? Because a turnover rate of ninety-five to a hundred percent is unreasonable, that is an indicator that something is terribly, terribly wrong, but just because you keep everyone, doesn't necessarily mean everything is right either, so, um, but I, but I'm guessing that's where the turnover rate question was in here, is because that signaled that there was a major disaster.
Yes. Like, this is a twenty-one, so this is.
So like, the key outcome indicator is that we don't have a catastrophic turnover rate, so, like.
Go ahead, Gary.
Members of council, I know I talked to Zach about this and brought it up a couple weeks ago, but from a training perspective, from the nationalistic management system, it would be helpful if staff, I know Zach and I haven't circled back with it, but at least to get to seven, eight, and one hundred. So if there is an incident within the city, council has a good understanding what your role is, um, as well as what the roles are for individuals within the workforce within the city. So just adding that somehow, I don't know if that fits in.
Yeah, it's chief, uh, it's NIMs one hundred, seven hundred, and.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred. That some of the councils willing to do is have some incident management training, just in case someone were to happen in town?
I am, because I've already taken those.
Okay.
And two hundred, but that's more healthcare specific.
As long as it doesn't involve too much running.
It goes to four hundred.
We saw it run today.
Running?
That's true.
That's about the limit right there.
But yeah, I think it's important that the council and, you know, even staff, even myself, would be aware, because I've never taken those courses either, that it's good for everyone to know what's happened in an emergency, or something happens, what are we doing? Who's talking to who, who's doing what, what's, who's in charge of this thing and that thing, so.
I mean, yes.
It seems, okay.
Okay.
Is everyone okay with item three? We can leave it at that, doesn't have to be, I'll leave training and targets, and then we can.
Yeah.
Say citywide required training, and then it's going, because it's kind of very premier here, as we add things like what we just talked about.
Yep, so you're meaning on the target?
On the target, yeah.
Target, I think it still should be a hundred percent staff meets citywide training requirements.
Citywide required training.
Okay, required training, cut.
I think that next line is, we're moving in that direction no matter what.
What next line?
Yeah, accessible.
Accessible inclusive parks and facilities?
Well, legally, we need to, have we?
What's that?
We have to, I mean legally, we have to.
About once we hit the five thousand, wasn't that the?
Um, it's kind of been, well, we hit the five thousand a long time ago, so we have to continue to make progress towards it.
Yes.
Doesn't mean that you're changing things that exist today, but if we are touching anything, then we need to prove those into ADA compliance.
Yeah.
I think what we specifically looked at for this line of them, and I know it's Marty's comments, so he's not here, but, um, is specifically looking at like trail access points.
Crosswalks.
Crosswalks, and making sure that there's not just blinking lights and sidewalks, it's, there's not just blinking lights and sidewalks, it's, um, there's some of those, texture bumps, whatever they are. And then also there's talking, that's why some of those things talk, is so you could have people who can't see can use the crosswalk and know where it's at, so. I know it's annoying for some of the residents, but that's why it exists.
Um, are we at eighty percent of parks and facilities?
We are not, but we are, I don't even know the number, and it's higher than, higher than twenty-five, I think it's like thirty-five or forty, but we're working, a lot of them got done last year with the county on the River Road, so. I think all of the new stuff obviously is ADA compliant, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, we got, the ADA compliance got done on, the one park we didn't have was Donahue Dells, that got redone two years ago.
Is it possible to say?
It might even be higher than forty, it's a number.
Yeah, but I think it's important, cause if you, if I'm just coming in and I see that we're at forty-five percent compliance, right, I'm like, that's terrible, we're doing a terrible job. But if you tell me everything that we did touch, like all of our, every new park we built and every park that got fixed was brought up and like we could say a hundred percent of those, right? So I think we can say this in a way that is both reflective, like reflective of reality, but is also like written in a more positive way. So, so I think it's fair to say a hundred percent of new parks and facilities are ADA compliant, that's correct?
Yep.
And, um, all part, any improvements to existing parks and facilities are, are, are ADA compliant?
We can't do that, because like a ladder or the ball field down by us is not, I mean, it would probably never be.
But what I'm saying is the ones that we're fixing, that, I guess that's my question, anything that we fix or update is pulled into compliance.
Correct.
And so we can say a hundred percent of the parks and facilities that were updated, that are, that are being updated or being fixed.
But wherever it been, has that been ADA compliant?
It's not been done, nope.
But hasn't it been done?
It has not been done, no, it hasn't been done in a while.
It's upgraded, it's not done.
We made a trail, so that was more ADA compliant.
Wherever it been?
Put some equipment in there.
We added a trail there.
And a swing.
And a swing.
It was kind of rebuilt in, uh,
There were some ADA compliance.
There were, it wasn't a hundred percent.
Right, I don't, I don't know.
So I was just gonna say, if that's the case, are, do we, do we not update some stuff because we get this ADA hook in there?
What do you mean?
Well, if it's gonna cost us five hundred K to, to get something ADA compliant and we're doing a, I don't know, adding a swing set, are we not adding a swing set because we, we're not gonna wanna kick in that figure?
I think we've always tried to be cognizant of the dollars, but also try to be cognizant of ADA compliance, so we try to, I don't wanna.
Let me, let me be very straight with this.
But the answer is, I think your question is no, obviously don't do that. We don't just do a five hundred thousand upgrade just to make it ADA compliant.
No, what's, no.
We don't say no to a project because we don't want, it's not deter.
Or, or do we do, is, is, is it a, somehow is it a deal where, let's say we replace the equipment in the river's bed, which we did. Would we then automatically make it one hundred percent ADA compliant, or would we just do our best?
We'd do our best.
Okay. That, that was kind of what I was getting at.
Yeah, we would make something on there ADA compliant, whether it's a swing or a trail or something that the, could then be utilized.
I get it.
There's, I don't think we could make any park a hundred percent ADA compliant, because you'd have to have the soft rubber pad, padding everywhere.
Yeah.
You have to have it compliant with a wheelchair so they have, able to go up. I don't know if, I don't know if we have a single one that's all a hundred percent ADA compliant. I think a lot of them are percentage wise, but.
So then we should just take that percent off?
I would get rid of the eighty percent of all parks, you know? I mean, maybe that's a goal, but it's not a realistic one.
Target is to then just make parks and facilities ADA compliant?
As ADA compliant as possible?
Yeah, something along those.
Amenities in the park, some amenities in the park will be ADA compliant.
I think you can make something work there. Amenities in parks and facilities ADA compliant as much as possible. For any one other comments, and what, your calls?
It's a wrap.
You don't, you do, you don't?
I'm just, as much as possible.
I know.
I don't like those, maybe it's as much as feasible, like, you know what I mean? Like, cause possible means that like if it's possible, it could happen.
That's true, that's true.
And so, for me, I get, I like very strict borders on things, and so for me, it being as possible leaves that open for a lot of interpretation.
A lawsuit.
Yeah, and so maybe it's as feasible, meaning if we have the funds, if it, financially feasible, or even structurally feasible.
Are ADA compliant, and you're not saying that possible is feasible.
Right, am I wrong? I will.
Doesn't code drive a lot of this?
Well, that's what I was kind of getting at before.
No code that requires you to do a hundred percent ADA compliant.
No.
What is the, what's the percentage?
Uh, I think Marty would have that, I don't know if that.
Are we meeting it on the parks we've updated though, the new ones we are and the ones we've updated, okay.
Can we say meeting ADA target, or meeting ADA requirements?
Sure.
I mean, if that's the requirement, if, if, if the ADA requirement is not that it's a hundred percent, right? Like, the ADA has a requirement and we're meeting.
At a minimum, we're meeting those requirements.
Right, and it, I mean, there's priorities within that, and I, I don't know a thing about how it relates to parks, but the ADA, the Minnesota Accessibility Code, it talks about accessible routes and accessible facilities as the top two priorities. And Chief Hendrickson, you can maybe speak to some of this better too, although maybe not the parks piece, but it's, it's routes, it's facilities, it's parking, those things are all the highest priority ADA things when it comes to, you know, just general, um, commercial buildings, so.
Mayor members of council, yeah, I mean, there's lots of ADA requirements, like, we're doing a little bit with our bathrooms here, uh, with the remodel, putting in handles.
Get into building code and it'll tell you what it has to be. I don't know how it relates to like swing sets or slides or those things, you know, there's a certain percentage of them need to be accessible or how that, that's written, but I think where we, because that, that's sort of dictated to us when we do a new park, how, what that's gotta do be to be compliant, you know, it's, it's more the look back stuff, like what are we doing with our existing parks to improve accessibility and parking and routes and, and those kind of things.
So what do you want to say, we're working to improve our existing parks, to improve their ADA compliance? And just, I know that's vague, but is that less vague than as possible? Or like less litigating?
I like the expertise.
Well, everything's feasible, it just costs money.
Well, would, not necessarily though, you may not have the room to put a ramp in, that wouldn't be feasible, it may cost too much money to, yeah, so. I guess like feasible more than possible, possible leaves the door open, feasible cracks it.
I'm a hundred percent with you on that. But I'm more with also like if we're meeting the requirements that we are required to meet, then we're good.
Well, then we don't even need it.
But it's a, just, I would just say working toward ADA compliance requirements, that's, but that.
Is that gonna, okay.
I don't know that it really necessarily matters how we word it, it all means the same thing, I think we're beating it here, get that horse, yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna go over to active items, cause I don't, we don't have a bunch of them, but I wanna touch base on them quickly and then we can get the heck out of here. Public spaces compliance assessment, we have not done that yet, that I'm aware of. That would be the related to ADA compliance stuff, do you wanna try to do that still? We have not done that.
That would be like the community center?
Um, yeah, so basically they go through all of our public spaces, like City Hall, Activity Center, but they go through all the parks as well and make sure that they're, what's our, how much, not our percentage, but how are we working towards that, where are we at now, what can we do in the future to make it better and?
Yeah, I think that's still legit and it's, and it's kind of overarching, but includes the thing we were just talking about with the parks.
It does, it does. Okay, so that's on there, we got the digitized files, that's staying on there as well, active code enforcement?
I think we do need to talk about code enforcement, that's an issue and it needs to be addressed. I don't know if active code enforcement or looking into code enforcement.
Where's the hammer?
Question mark. Did they hit the button and I don't?
If, yeah, we're gonna head that direction, I'm gonna want a lot less regulations.
Pause.
Explore realistic code enforcement?
I think that one's too big, I think we take it off. And if we're, cause if our, our history and our current practice is to.
Everything is passive.
Everything is based on complaint.
No complaints.
Now this says we're gonna go to active code enforcement, that's a big change, and I.
Yeah, that's a huge change.
Can we, could we say?
It's more.
It's more everything, yeah.
Code enforcement, like.
More people here for our meetings too.
Explore code enforcement options? Instead of saying active code enforcement, because I do think there are some issues, even if we stick with the passive code enforcement, right? Even if we don't switch to active code enforcement, there are still some codes that are virtually impossible to enforce.
Then they shouldn't be there.
Well, then they shouldn't be there, and so like, I think, to me, explore code enforcement is, we need to think about what codes can and cannot be enforced, period. And then which ones are working fine in the passive and which ones aren't working fine in the passive and, and how do we address those? I do think that it's, the more people we get, the bigger an issue it's gonna be, and I think we need to fix it sooner and not wait until it blows up.
The more people you get, the stricter it will be, someday it will get it.
Ordances, or you're looking at code enforcement?
You need to look at both.
Yeah.
That's.
Right, that's the worst section in about three years.
Yeah.
What's that?
Go hand in hand.
Yeah.
Exactly where I asked the question.
I don't disagree with you guys, the collective, but does it still fit in with these other goals? Because we removed the number of code and safety violations, so like what, what does that tie back to then as far as our goals and?
To me, it's a safe and wel, well, it's, it's the overarching initiative of a safe and welcoming community, right? Because.
Well, yeah, and they, they may actually, those two may be opposed to each other too. I mean, safe means.
One thing and welcoming.
Nobody has any fun.
Not necessarily.
Yeah, it does. And welcoming means the opposite, so I mean.
Also, not necessarily.
Well, just saying that, that they could be at odds if.
It's a balancing act.
Yeah, it is.
It is definitely a balancing act, and as we get bigger, it's gonna get harder.
Mm-hmm.
You would like to just take that off entirely.
No, I'm just writing what you guys want me to put down.
Let's deal with it when it gets bigger.
I think that's a huge can of worms. I mean, we could at least have another conversation about it.
We could have, you know.
That's why I said explore code enforcement options. It's not committing us to anything, and the decision might be to stick to our current passive option, right? Like, we just wanna talk about it, is what I wanna do, I wanna talk about it.
Okay, that's.
And not at the end of a meeting where we all wanna go home.
I, I'm trying to post one, host public safety events, I think that continues to be one that we wanna work on, yep. Um, which could include, oh, I know that the mayor has mentioned open house to me a couple times about having it more than once a year to keep people engaged, so.
Yep, absolutely.
Hosting public safety events is important. Um, maintaining citywide training coordination, that was my, a change create to maintain, and then all the rest of them we already talked about and discussed, so.
What happened to the create staff recognition among this program, did that happen?
That's a done, yeah, that's, I'm sorry, I crossed it off, cause it's already done, we did it back in twenty-two, so.
Fire away, Gary.
Mayor members, I just want a clarifying question, so on code enforcement, back to Councilman Van Anson's question. I just wanna verify from a code enforcement, are we talking like building code enforcement, are we talking fire code enforcement?
I think zoning code.
Zoning code, yeah.
I think it's specific.
Okay, just wanna clarify, cause we're gonna continue to do fire code.
I would hope to God you continue to do fire code enforcement.
Just verifying.
Yes, no, we're talking about things like fence and lighting and, yeah, tall grass and, did you bring your garbage can in? And you have four boats in your backyard and none of them are on surfaces, and I agree with you, I don't wanna get, but I just think we need to talk about it. I'm not saying what the.
I added the word zoning so that Chief Henderson could sleep tonight.
Okay, good.
As long as she'll be sleeping, he won't even know I said anything, so. See?
He missed it.
You missed it.
He already checked it.
Okay, I, I'm not gonna ask you to adopt this today, cause I wanna make sure I get all the changes made down here. Um, and then I will bring this, I'll bring it back to the next meeting and just approve, so. One more, I, it should be done, but again, I wanna make sure you guys see the final version before I say, yep, looks great, right? And then you're like, no.
How you doing?
Me?
You got something?
No.
Anything else you wanna add to this at all? You guys have had so much fun.
My parts probably died, so, but, yeah, might wanna tweak it a little bit more, but I, actually, I, we can always, you know, tweak this later.
We can always change this later on, so if you guys get a wild hair and say, hey, we need to change this.
Long-term plan, we can always tweak it.
I'd have more fun watching the news myself.
You wanna do it, fly away?
Why do you run for state councilman, this is the fun stuff.
Call this, yeah. Overreach.
Thank you very much, Mayor Council, I know it's hard to get that process done and I hope that next year hopefully it will be much more simple than today.
Okay, uh, if there's no objections, we'll be adjourned then, we'll be adjourned.